Good morning, Chair Bone.
Good morning.
There is one modification to the agenda today. Item D7 is being pulled for discussion and the sheriff will not be able to be present for this item just for situational awareness.
All right. With that, we'll move on to the consent calendar.
I'll move approval of the balance of the consent calendar minus that item.
Second. Move the second, public comment?
Thomas Stewart. I know of a building in the county that is on the verge of collapse due to a storm or earthquake, and it just says my...
Tom, that'll be on non-agenda items, I believe. Is that, that's not on the consent calendar, is it?
No.
Okay. Give me a second, I'll call you back up for that, okay? Thank you.
Appreciate that.
You're welcome.
I have one online.
Oh, boy.
Caller 1705, I'm going to unmute you and you have three minutes.
Yes, good morning, Supervisors. Lorna Moffett here. I'm very concerned about wind farms at sea because of their size, as tall as the Eiffel Tower, and they're used as a magnet...
Lorna, excuse me, that'll, that'll be on non-agenda items also. We're on the consent calendar now. Hang, hang on, don't hang up, but we'll bring you back on, okay? Thank you.
I have one more. 7718, I'm going to unmute you and you have three minutes.
Caller?
Hello, Ken Solovsky calling from Mexico. I am speaking on the consent item, item 15, submission of a grant application for $3.3 million for the California Department of Housing and Community Development, CDB Community Development Block Grant, CDBG. Strongly suggest and have great appreciation for the county proceeding in getting this money. There's wonderful things you can do with this money. Unfortunately, unlike the county, the city of Blue Lake, I don't even think that's applied for 10 years now, that's probably 250,000 a year. $2.5 million we could have had, but we don't because of, in my opinion, gross negligence. But the county's not grossing negligence. Strongly support the efforts by John Ford and the planning and building to acquire that grant money, which will be able to do wonderful things in the county. Make some opportunity to speak.
Thank you. And that looks like that's it on the call-ins. I'll bring it back to the board. It's been moved and seconded. Any more discussion?
I'd just like to express my appreciation for Laura Mantegna for serving on the Humboldt County Behavioral Health Board. She's currently the chair. She's being reappointed, and I support that fully. And I think she's doing a fantastic job working on a lot of the goals of that board, and hopefully I'll have a chance to report back about some of that work in the near future.
Anybody else? I want to, hang on a sec here. We did have the Hitterson Center, Kiwanis, recognize some folks, I think Sandra Curtley and, I'm trying, I didn't get a copy, so I'm pulling it up right now. Recognize the people that got recognized. Sandra Curtley and Monica Alcorn for nonprofit business of the year. Mary Keane for her work with We Are Up. They had a great fundraiser for that the other night with, for that 80-acre project they're building up in McKinleville. It was sold out and, or almost sold out, so it was, it was great to see the, as many people show up Friday night to that, so. Lot of women of distinction for Mary Keane and nonprofit and business of the year, and a lot of, a lot of ladies out there getting it done, so we appreciate that. With that, it's been moved and seconded.
Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Royo?
Yes.
Chair Bone?
Sure.
Thank you. Motion carries 4-0.
All right, and we'll go to item number D7. Item is pulled from consent.
Thank you, Chair. This item is presented today to comply with the grand jury requirements that we provide an update within 90 days to recognize recommendations in the grand jury report that your Board of Supervisors has indicated you will further explore, particularly being the recommendation to create a sheriff's oversight committee. The work group was only able to meet once just last week, or the week before, I think it might have been actually, to discuss the recommendations, and through that conversation did identify that fairly expeditiously, a sheriff's advisory council could be established and is thus working to bring forward to your board recommendations on what that council might look like. Furthermore, the ad hoc, which is comprised of Supervisor Bushnell and Supervisor Royo and the sheriff and myself, will continue to explore the other recommendations in the grand jury report. So with that, I would pass it over with your chair's approval to Supervisor Madron, who is asked to have a discussion on this item.
That'd be great. Supervisor Madron?
Yeah, thank you, Chair, and thank you, CIAO Hayes. I didn't really want to get into a deep discussion at all. I appreciate the work of the ad hoc and yourself and the sheriff, and I realize you've only just met once, so there's a lot more work to do. I just simply wanted to pull it from consent so we had the opportunity to kind of express what we're working on to the community and highlight that, whereas under consent, it just kind of stays a little bit buried, not that that's any intention to do that, per se. So that was really it. No, no need to get into any long discussions. We've got other important matters here today. I appreciate the work of the ad hoc and look forward to further discussion and recommendations. That's it.
No.
We would need a motion to receive and file the report.
Oh.
I will move, just same things, receive and file. Second?
So, what I'm, and where I'm going on, so the sheriff's recommending that he put a committee together, right, or a...
A council.
A council.
Yeah, sure, an advisory council.
Yeah.
Which would be comprised of up to seven members. The sheriff's oversight working group, which is the four of us, as previously mentioned, would vet the candidates to sit on that council and then bring forward those recommendations to your board.
Okay. And the sheriff will work within those, he doesn't have a problem working within those parameters?
The council was the sheriff's idea.
Okay. And why, I'm, I'm just wondering, if we keep going down the road, why we wouldn't embrace that? Because he's elected, he's, it just seems like we're stepping, you know, there are so many avenues, and we have the grand jury, we've got the critical response team, we've got, I know Eureka does really well, I saw their consultant said, "We're doing a really great job, hire us for another year." So I'm just wondering why we wouldn't follow the sheriff's guidance on this, or why we wouldn't?
I'd be happy to speak to the recommendation of the, you know, the memo lays out both the ad hoc and the sheriff's thoughts on this. So this is the recommendation of both the ad hoc and the sheriff. After a discussion about that, this is, I will note, this is very similar to what Eureka did. The chief, many years ago, established a chief's advisory group that was not, it was an ad hoc, so an opportunity to talk about, excuse me, internal process investigations, you know, matters that can be disclosed with confidentiality, of course, in a, in a, that type of setting. And, you know, it offers the opportunity to get a little bit of outside input, outside the law enforcement space, but still, you know, it's not the same thing as what the grand jury recommended. So it's a step in the direction of, you know, seeing about some additional input on the process and procedure and, you know, taking in that advice and building connections in the community. And that would also help to inform what other processes could look like, like how they go about ensuring confidentiality, what can and can't be, you know, shared with members that aren't in the department, community members who aren't in the department. So the sheriff recommended it, and the ad hoc supported it, and the evaluation of other alternatives would help us in case the voters were ever to initiate a sheriff's oversight group, or in case the board were ever to do that in the future, so we'd have information about the timeline and the costs that other counties have faced, so we're going to continue to explore that. So the recommendation is to embrace the sheriff's suggestion and to go forward with additional information gathering.
But not move on the sheriff's recommendation until, what's the timeframe?
Nope, I think he'll begin putting together his advisory council right away. Again, this is sort of something that the sheriff can do on, on his own prerogative, but we're working with him on it so that there's collaboration, and the ad hoc has a chance to, you know, potentially recommend people that might be a great fit for this kind of group, or, you know, give feedback about it.
All right, I just, we had one of these 12 years ago, and it, and it, we met downstairs by the elevators, and it kind of went by the wayside because of lack of anything to do and input, and then lack of quorum to actually have the discussion, so it kind of died the vines, so I just, you know, we could try again and hope for the best. All right. Supervisor Madron?
Thank you, Chair. Well, I appreciate the detail there, Supervisor Royo. You know, while I support this as a first step, I really think that when you look at, at least my experience going to the city of Eureka's citizen oversight committee, is that it can be, there can be a lot of detail and a lot of information to try and evaluate in incidents. I'll just give Cal Poly Humboldt as an example, because we haven't had any lawsuits, so I can talk about it. It was basically pretty well laid out in a big way in the North Coast Journal this last week, you know, blow-by-blow, so to speak, from the, the body-worn cameras and comments being made during the event and stuff. I think citizens really want to have the ability to look at these critical incidents and ask the questions of, well, what did we learn from this? How can we do better? And the details are so involved that it seems to me difficult for just an advisory council to really delve into the level of details that I saw when I went to the city of Eureka's oversight, Citizens Oversight Committee review of the Cal Poly incident in particular. It's kind of way beyond the ability of a volunteer citizens group to really delve into that kind of level of detail. And I think it's important, and I know Eureka found it to be incredibly valuable, and the chief himself talked a lot about how there were many lessons learned from, from that experience. So I think this is a great first step, but it won't satisfy myself, and I believe a lot of the public, in regards to wanting to have a deeper oversight into critical incidents, so that we can learn from them and improve. And from all the data I've seen, that process in particular really helps build the public trust for our law enforcement agencies. So again, I look forward to the work of your working group and the outcome of investigation into pros and cons and costs and all those things. And I've said this before, but I'm not sure that we can afford not to have this kind of group, even if it costs us money to hire a consultant who is expert in this realm to do that, because we have a lot of lawsuits and they cost a tremendous amount of money. And if we can reduce that amount of liability by improving our practices, that's a great thing, and if it improves public trust in our law enforcement agencies, that's a great thing. So thank you for your work, I look forward to further discussions. Thank you.
All right. Is there any public comment on this item?
I have two callers. I'm not sure if they're wanting agenda item, non-agenda items or this, so I'm going to ask them. Caller 3636, if you would like to comment on agenda item D7 that was pulled, please speak, and you have three minutes. Okay, I take that as a no. 7718, if you would like to speak on this item, please speak, you have three minutes.
Hello, Ken Solovsky, I do wish to speak on this. I, I sat down there, Sheriff Mike Downing appointed me to that committee down by the elevator 12 years ago. I wasn't traveling. I don't think we ever had a lack of quorum, if I remember. We had a lack of people desiring to make use of us. That was definitely true, we can state that. Times have changed in 12 years. I'm really pleased to hear that the sheriff is on board to do this. It's worked well with Eureka, strongly supported, and I agree with everything that Supervisor Steve Madron said. The biggest thing that can come out of this is fixing problems, minimizing litigation, and a public trust in the, in the process and in our sheriff. So I'm very happy to see a 180 being done by the sheriff on this one, and I'm doing a 180 myself and supporting everything that's going on here, and I think it's a wonderful idea. This is my opportunity to comment on this item pulled from consent.
Thank you, caller. Seeing podium.
Gordon Clowder here. Yeah, I think it's also a really good idea. I think having a sheriff's over that committee and having the sheriff be involved in that is a wonderful idea. I think it'll do more than the live TV ride-alongs for helping get more public trust for the sheriffs, for sure, so I'm on board, too. Yeah.
Thank you. All right. It's been moved and seconded.
Supervisor Royo? Yes. Chair Bone?
Sure.
Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Motion carries 4-0.
All right. Now we will have public comment on non-agenda items. This will be for, is Lauren still on there? Tom?
Thomas Stewart. I know of a building in the county that is on the verge of collapse due to a storm or earthquake. Personally, I believe we'll have a large earthquake in California before the end of the year, that's just my personal feeling. Would you like to know what that building is? Yes or no? What's that?
Tell us, Tom, the suspense is killing me.
I'm sorry?
Tell us.
Yes. It is the very large hangar at Murray Field.
Okay.
Talked to the people that own planes. It rains inside the building, when it rains outside. It is steel. Murray Field buildings haven't been maintained for at least 40 years. It's so sad. You collect over $200,000 a year, but no maintenance there. There's even a telephone booth without a telephone. Cody didn't know what he was doing here, and he, he wasted a lot of money, of your money in studies. I interviewed him personally. COVID lasted an awful long time at the airport, so getting rid of him was a good idea. Pick somebody that's actually qualified this time, okay? So this goes to the Eureka City School Board meeting last Thursday. I had three questions for them. Why is the soil being moved from Albee Stadium to the soccer field next to Dalvery School? Second, do you have a permit? Third, is the soil or dirt contaminated? I'm not leaving the building without these three questions answered, and because they couldn't provide the answers, I was arrested for trespassing. Believe me, you do not want to be arrested, period. That was an ordeal, it will be documented. That was terrible. I've been working on trying to get this all for over two weeks. What agency would handle that? I had a 20-minute lecture yesterday from the fire department, why they wouldn't do anything. That was unbelievable. Out of the seven officers, EPD, one officer sent me to what he thought was Environmental Protection Agency in Arcata. That turned out to be epic. So this is a potential hazard to the students at Alice Burney. It's so sad that a threat to children isn't taken seriously when it doesn't involve maybe a gun. When it involves an environmental hazard, I guess it's low priority. That's so sad. I worked on Indianola for over 22 years trying to get that fixed. A friend of mine died there in 2001. Coastal Commission approval 2013, Coastal Commission approval 2019. Things take an awful long time here. It's so sad. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. Once again, I'm Diana from Yee-Haw, and you guys came out and inspected us since I was here last, and I got a chartreuse sticker slapped upon my bus, and so I'm, I haven't been able to find out yet what exactly is required to satisfy the things of this sticker. I meant to email you, and I like totally forgot to do that. No one, no one really seems to know, no one seems to know at the place. We all talked about it and stuff. So what I want is, I'd like some clarity, but also I understand that a bus can't, actually can't be turned into a living, a permanent living space under current codes. And I just think, as with everything else with Yee-Haw, if there's some reason, if there's some legal reason why Yee-Haw can't exist, well, then that reason is wrong, because Yee-Haw can exist, and we can exist safely, and we can do it nicely. So there's got to be some way to make it legal, changing the codes or whatever needs to be done, and then if we need to do our electricity a little bit differently, we'll do that. If we need to, if I need to like shift the, if I need to do anything to make the bus safer, because I have a fire in there, even though it really is quite safe, everything's really, really safe in there. But I mean, if there's something that could make it even safer, and you can tell me what that is, I'll do that. And, but I just don't like the idea that no matter what we do, we're going to fail in the end, if you can, and so I, I'm like kind of hanging back, but especially I'd like some, some clarity on what I'm supposed to do to satisfy this 10-day tag we got here. Okay, so that's the one thing. And the other thing, the other part of that is that Yee-Haw is a, do you know, I live there, it's cheap, I'm on social security, and it doesn't cost very much for me for rent, and I, it's really, it's really all that and everything, and that's good for me. But the thing is, it's, and I, and I want you all to know, I'm not there forever either. I've got a, I've got a, a request in for Silvercrest, so I may not, I'm, I'm going to go like one of these days. But it's not that it's by default. It is like the best way that a human being can live, in my opinion, in the forest, with your friends around. Whenever you step out of the house, you're likely to see somebody. You never know who's going to be there as a guest. You never know what kind of magic any given day is going to have in it, really. And then all the fun that we have together and everything, and we make music together, my friends and I make music together every Sunday afternoon, and, and we're getting really good. Three-part women's harmony, you can believe. So anyway, it's just got all these like advantages, it seems like, that our existence is such a good thing, that it should be wanted, do you know, by the county.
Thank you.
I'd like to start by acknowledging two of the tenants that I'm aware of, of the Hoopa culture. No one goes hungry, and everybody is sheltered at night. And that said, I'd like to start by discussing all these fires that have been happening at this homeless encampment in Redway. Apparently, it's owned by Michelle Bushnell, and I'm wondering why, like where, where is the, you know, where is the sense of safety? Why, why aren't we doing anything for the people down in Redway that have to deal with this? Why can't it be abated? I'm, I'm just wondering, why, why isn't half of code enforcement's budget going towards that? Why is it going towards Yee-Haw, when there's been no records of fires in 38 years at Yee-Haw? There's been no records of public health outbreaks? It just seems more and more like a waste of money, time, and resources going after Yee-Haw, when you see that there are definitely bigger fish to fry here in the county. It seems more than ever to be a, honestly, more like a chiefly political move driven by money and politics. If people are evicted in general, let alone at Yee-Haw, where are they going to go? And what is the cost of having all those additional people on the street and having to pay for, you know, ER visits and all this stuff? Concerning Yee-Haw, progress has continued to be made. It looks wonderful out there. We still have not gotten any letters in the mail regarding the 10-day notices on the chartreuse tags of the vehicles, which is really frustrating. We're not getting any, any direction from Building and Planning or John Ford about how to proceed or what to do, especially given the gray areas like, like the buses and RVs. So we would love to keep working with you guys, if you guys would meet us there. Billions have been put towards homelessness in this state alone, and it is not going away. And Yee-Haw's been solving homelessness for 38 years with virtually no issues, and so I hope that we can look at that and we can try and work with this parcel, work with the property, and try and have some sort of real constructive thing going. I mean, all this money going towards demolition, I feel like it would cost about as much to bring all those structures up to code. No one should go hungry, and no one should be without shelter. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, definitely ditto on all of that. So I was...
Pull the mic down to you, please.
My name is Heather, I also live at Yee-Haw, and I've been associated with the property for a lot of years, and I was looking at old home movies yesterday, and there's a movie of my son when he was eight years old interviewing his neighborhood children at Yee-Haw, saying, "What do you like about Yee-Haw?" And it's just the sweetest thing. There's this child, he's somewhat disabled, he spends a lot of time on the computer, this is 20 years ago, and the, the child's just, "Well, look at it, look at all the trees, it's this, you know, an amazing place." And it just, that was 20 years ago. There hasn't been issues, there's not issues, you know? And then yesterday, I was at a child's birthday party, a little two-year-old, and six, six little children running around playing. We have a little trampoline that has the net around it, and I just thought, you know, the history of this place, this is another child that was born there, and I just, the fact that you guys want to tear it down is like unbelievable to me. How do you think that these little children, these six little children jumping around on the trampoline with parents nearby, in the woods, safe? Why are they going to be safer on the streets of Eureka? Tell me that. Tell me that.
My name is Kelly. I'm a longtime Humboldt County resident. All four of my biological children were born here and raised in Humboldt County. My eldest daughter, Tamara Sanders, was trafficked and then brutally murdered in Crescent City. I think this is the perfect follow-up to somebody mentioning the concern about fires in Humboldt County. In, my daughter's death was deemed by the Delnort Sheriffs as a suspicious death. I had my daughter exhumed and reexamined, because prior to them notifying me, she was buried. So I had her exhumed and reexamined, and there was many inconsistent findings, including most of my daughter's organs were gone, and also my pathologist found that my daughter was doused in chemicals. They still deemed my daughter's death as... They still deemed my daughter's death as a suspicious death, and per the Health and Safety Code, a state fire marshal must investigate any fire where there's a death involved. In Humboldt, there is an arson task force. In Delnort, there is no arson task force. So they call upon Humboldt and Delnort CAL FIRE, which is a state agency, but it is Humboldt and Delnort County. Because I previously worked at CAL FIRE in Fortuna, I know, I knew that I had to go there to talk to them about my daughter's fire. I spoke to fire prevention, and I was told that it was not arson because there were no pour patterns. The floor of the building was a dirt floor. You would not see pour patterns. So here we have wildfires signing off. However, they're signing off illegally. They knew it was arson. There was a pile of flammable cans that were visible from where my daughter had been laying. He ended up finishing the report as undetermined. Delnort still cannot provide an investigator to me for this case. My daughter had a mouthful of intact teeth, yet they buried her. She was a local. She had dental work. She had a missing person. They intentionally delayed, and they waited for DNA confirmation to tell me. I have big-time concerns, and I think there should be definite Humboldt, there should be some oversight to sheriff's departments, not only in Humboldt County but Delnort County. I'm so happy that I came today. I'll be at future meetings, and I will continue to speak out about this issue. I want justice for my daughter, period.
Thank you.
Close that? Bring it back?
I have four online. Caller 7718, I'm going to unmute you, and you have three minutes.
Ken Swalowski, Happy Halloween. I consider this a Halloween meeting. Before I get into the Halloween topic, I wish to thank our President, Joe Biden, for acknowledging what happened to the indigenous children when they were taken from their parents and put in these schools. It may be a political ploy or whatnot, but it still is due to happen. Unfortunately, history repeats itself, and unfortunately, in my opinion, the legacy of this board may be, if you turn your eye, what was brought to your attention that this was ongoing. Same thing taking away a child and putting it in a boarding school, or taking it away and turning it over to a pedophile. I think maybe the latter is worse. So I received major pushback from all, major telling things, including your HTR department threatening me with litigation when I attempted to file a claim and said they would no longer talk to me verbally. I had to put everything in email. So I haven't proceeded with that. That's on them to proceed, doing investigations. So I do, I do find that disturbing. Halloween, let's talk about that a little bit. It's the day of warlocks and witches and all kinds of things of that nature. History on witches and warlocks were, in my opinion, it's a test idea for people if they can whisper animals, do strange things with their mind that you wouldn't think most people could do. They're usually on the spectrum of autism. I'm quite confident that these people who are unique individuals were most likely on that spectrum. And they, back then, I guess they were burned at the stake, the same as people who stole horses or hounds, or in a different age. I caution you, I want to give you an example of a witch. You know her. I will give you a description. She whispers animals, specializes in horses, donkeys, dogs, all kinds of animals. They come to her, and she heals them. Healers are also, in my opinion, what you would call a witch. Historically, this person's grandfather was known for witching well, so I guess the type of male that would be warlocky well. Nobody can explain that happens. Nobody can explain why somebody's capable of putting a curse on somebody, and actually it comes to fruition. This particular person who put a curse on somebody, and not far thereafter, I would have informed the person, they're a jib about right away, that person fell down the stairs. So I'll give you another case. I think Erin Beth McClure, or the Beth's been added there, is a person, and if you know Beth, you know what a powerful person she is. She's the kind of person who takes exception to children being abused and things. There is no, there's no crime in putting a spell on somebody or that can be just written. So many people fall down or they have whatever. If that person was cursed, well, you may start to wonder about that. It's Halloween. Enjoy. Hopefully, the children will all be safe out there. And I do hope you take...
Caller 2837, I'm going to unmute you, and you have three minutes.
Hello. My name is Brian Rosen. I live in Trinidad, California. I have a number of concerns, and I'm going to try to get it into three minutes. First of all, I just can't help but mentioning the Palestinian plight. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Because somehow I got muted. Something is wrong with the system. I don't know what's going on. Anyway, all of our problems seem very little compared to all the Palestinian people who are being just massacred, and this has been happening for so many years, and we really need to stand in support of them. And against this crazy war machine that Martin Luther King spoke about, that billions of dollars were spent to commit mass murder, and we're doing it, we're still doing it all over the world, overturning democratically elected government through self-worth. We've been doing it since the days we exterminated the Native Americans. Okay, so I'm switching now a little bit, now that I've said that, to wind farms. Wind farms, giant, giant windmills, not the windmills of old, put out a huge, huge frequency when they're out at the sea. And when you put a microphone underneath the water, it's huge, and it totally disrupts the dolphins and the whales and their own sonar system by putting all this sonar out there. And they're doing research, more and more research is indicating that when wind farms go in areas, the whale deaths are increasing, and it is very, very devastating to marine life. So we really, they're too big, and they put out a huge, huge frequency. It's overkill. Like the caller said, it's as big, as high as the Eiffel Tower. And I want to mention that I'm really concerned about Mike Wilson on the Coastal Commission. I will give him credit because he actually spoke with me, which seems like a rare thing. Maybe he's quite accessible. But he voted for Elon Musk's space launch, which does tremendous damage to marine life, the vibration down in Vandenberg Air Force Base. And then he voted for the Surf Busway, which is going to really, that's a significant disruption of one of the last, most important wetlands, I mean, sand dune complexes in California, the second most important one. And a simple carpool lane would have worked. And the Coastal Commission staff were saying that, that we needed to look at alternatives, and the carpool was feasible, even though the powers and B and politicians down there didn't want it. And then suddenly, after the politicians met with them, that all got reversed, and every alternative was...
Caller 1705, I'm going to unmute you, and you have three minutes.
Yes, good morning, Supervisors. Lauren Moffett here. I'm very concerned about wind farms at sea because their size, as tall as the Eiffel Tower, and their use of the migratory path the bird population uses to utilize the wind. Farmers are now lamenting their decision to allow wind generators on their lands because of the constant noise and vibrations these turbines make 24/7. They report illnesses ranging from sleep deprivation to nervous disorders, and their cattle are suffering similar symptoms. There is another electricity-making promise called Voith, V-O-I-T-H. It's on YouTube, and I suggest you look at that. It utilizes wind energy, and the company is very well-established, and they have one working in Spain quite successfully. And it is much less environmentally damaging than these wind farms. And they are coming to your area. I heard on KPFA a recent interview with Adam Sterns, and it's very frightening. These huge floating structures are an overkill, and why not fund people who want wind energy to have small wind generators at their homes, like the ships use, downsize wind energy? It has a great place in replacing the oil economy, but it's definitely not at sea. So I hope that you prepare yourselves for what's coming your way. Thank you.
Thank you, caller.
Caller 9036, I'm going to unmute you, and you have three minutes.
Hi, this is Allison Burpee. I live in Bridgeville. I previously lived at Yee-Haw. There have been fires at Yee-Haw. We lost a place called the Pink Palace. It was a trailer. It burnt out because the occupant had a kind of laundry up to dry over a hot surface. And then there was the A-frame that Charles lived in, that burned in 2010. And that was the year he went to the code enforcement office to check on his alternative owner bill permit. Mr. Garth was able to file for alternative owner bill permits in 2008, when the county settled with them, with him. He agreed not to sue for him coming in at Dunpoint and holding up his residence on a planned inspection. And they agreed that he could apply for these permits and also that they wouldn't bring us anything prior to 2008. Well, we can see how that agreement has turned out. As on the agenda on the September 24th meeting, 2001 and 2007 violations were clearly detailed. And we can also see how it's turned out with regard to the abatement. That 2008 permit was lost when he went in in 2010. The lady at the front desk says she couldn't find it, and he was upset. And he said, "This is a notorious case, and I paid the fee, and you're going to find it. I'm going to come back." A few days later, he came back. When that lady saw him, she dived under her desk, and she stayed on her desk for the next hour and a half while he talked to someone else in the department, and they were able to locate that permit at the bottom of a pile of paperwork on someone else's desk. There had been an inspection. It was code enforcement's turn to get in touch with the property owner, but they failed to do so. And there was no follow-up. So then in 2021, the judge says, "This agreement that we had is not enforceable." He didn't say it wasn't legal. He didn't say that we shouldn't honor the agreement. He just said it wasn't enforceable. So what are we choosing to do here? Are we choosing to use force against the hippies who live in the forest and haven't caused anyone any harm? Why can't we pursue those alternative owner bill permits for those structures? Why haven't we received any mail on any of the tags that have been posted, or any answers to the questions that were asked by Nikki Norris, who used to be identity's legal counsel, but now is a resident? John Ford responded to her request, saying, "Most of those answers are confidential." Well, all of them weren't, and we'd all like to know. We'd all like to know why the county tagged items in our driveway with the quarry's address. We'd all like to know why those forms that are supposed to be sent out within 10 days haven't been sent.
That is all, Chair Bone.
All right. I'll bring it back to the board. We have a 9:30 time set that we almost made. From Golden State, Pat, you want to... Pat Blalock is the executive director of RCRC and a few other things that take place in Sacramento and does quite a bit of work for Humboldt County. There is some concern, and he was here about 10 weeks ago addressing them, and he's back today again, addressing them again. So I don't know if Supervisor Royal has anything to say, or do you want to hear the presentation?
I think, so we have a letter on the agenda and the presentation, so if you want to take them separately, I'm content with that. Okay? Letter after?
Yeah.
Okay, that sounds great.
Thank you, Chair Bone, and members, for having me here today. I appreciate it. And I'll be joined in the presentation with Arthur Wileen from our staff. I think he's going to join us virtually, and then we'll have a PowerPoint that I think they're going to bring up. It'll take just a couple of minutes to run through to kind of provide an overview of the project, which I'll do, a refresher on that. And then, secondly, Arthur will speak more specifically to the draft environmental impact report and the highlights of that and the process. I would encourage you to ask us questions anywhere along the way as we go through it, and hopefully it can be an interactive conversation. I just wanted to start by noting that Golden State Natural Resources is one of a series of affiliate entities that RCRC operates on behalf of rural counties. RCRC being the Rural County Representatives of California, a nonprofit mutual benefit corporation made up of 40 California counties, including Humboldt County. Two highlights I would note on this slide. One is on the far right, Golden State Connect Authority. That's our newest joint powers agency focused on bringing high-speed fiber to unserved and underserved rural communities. So far, Golden State Connect Authority has been recommended for awards of $88 million from the California Public Utilities Commission. We expect that number to increase as they complete their process, and we should be in construction by late 2020, '25, '26 on that network. The only other one I was going to mention briefly that may be of interest to hear is the Rural Advancement Institute. That is our research and education arm. We just completed an agreement with UC Santa Barbara to study the capacity of small rural fire districts and their ability to respond in an environment of increasing call volume, particularly EMS calls, with decreasing volunteerism. And we want to be able to gather some data on that so that we can have some productive discussions in the Capitol moving forward. So that's just two highlights I wanted to note of some of our affiliate entities. But today, we're here to talk about Golden State Natural Resources. And I wanted to start with this slide, which is really the foundation for GSNR. GSNR being the acronym for Golden State Natural Resources. But on the left is California's Wildfire and Forest Resilience Action Plan. And in it, its top goal is to increase the pace and scale of forest health treatments. And the goal is set at a million acres. We haven't yet reached that million acres. That's a million acres a year. We haven't yet reached that, but there are a lot of entities working to try to accelerate that, and they are making progress. I would note that the California Air Resources Board and their 2022 scoping plan actually calls for that million acres to be doubled, and they note that a combination of unhealthy, past unhealthy management practices and climate change have led to the forests in California being net emitters of carbon. And if we're to shift that back to forests being a sink for carbon, we need to see the 1 million double to 2 million in terms of annual treatment of forests. So we expect that 1 million number to increase in the coming years. In the middle is a recent meta-analysis conducted by the Forest Service Research Station, a meta-analysis being a study of studies. And there, they looked at 30 years of forest health treatments, and they noticed that the combination of prescribed fire and mechanical treatment led to a 72% reduction in catastrophic wildfire as a result. And so, lastly, on the far right is the Nature Conservancy and Aspen Institute issued a study essentially saying, "How do we do this?" So the state has set their policy direction. We know the science supports it, but we're not yet at that implementation goal, and now there's talk of increasing it. The Nature Conservancy basically says that the Forest Service can't do it alone, that they need to be partnering with local government, nonprofits, and state to meet that mark, and that's where Golden State Natural Resources enters, is to be the local government nonprofit partner in that. So this is a picture I took in the Modoc National Forest this summer that is a visual depiction, I would say, of what Golden State Natural Resources hopes to achieve. So in the back is a completed forest health project. That's, the work's already been done, and that's what the forest looks like afterwards. This particular project was designed to have just enough lumber, roundwood, timber, whatever you want to call it, to make it profitable for a local timber operator to come in and complete the project. I would note that the Forest Service has a number of bids where they received no bids because it wasn't profitable. But for this particular project, they were able to do it. The challenge is that pile on the right, and that is the biomass that's left over from this particular project. And if you were to drive along that road, you would see pile after pile of that size and scale left over from this project. Presently, those piles are either burned in place or left to decompose. Last week, I talked to Tuolumne County's Wildfire Resilience Team, and they indicated they had over 30,000 piles just in the Highwood 108 corridor from prior projects in Tuolumne County. And that's before they even began their Rigger project, which they just got approved. So it gives you a sense of the challenge that lies ahead in terms of the forest health projects and finding a sustainable outlet for the biomass. On this slide, we have a picture of the actual project that is the subject of the draft environmental impact report, and so... And so we, Golden State Natural Resources, has two sites, one in Lassen County and one in Tuolumne County. You'll hear more about this from Arthur, but essentially, the draft environmental impact report looks at completing forest health projects within 100-mile working radius of those two sites. So in this case, GSNR would be the lead to actually partner with the Forest Service to get those projects done. And then for the unmerchandise biomass, bringing that to either Lassen or Tuolumne County, to the sites where it would be converted to industrial pellet stock and then shipped by rail to the port of stock and then ultimately overseas at present for use as a replacement for coal in energy production. And I say "at present" because in the long term, we do see the domestic market increasing. I talked to a sustainable aviation fuel manufacturer who has recently shifted their engineering from wood chips to pellets. I inquired as to why, and he indicated it was the consistency of the pellet that they needed for their processes to work for sustainable aviation fuel. So we do believe the market's going to increase domestically, even as it is already increasing internationally. The next slide is a GIS depiction of the areas that are covered within the draft environmental impact report for forest treatment. And I just wanted to give you another visual of what that looks like on this particular slide. At this point, I'm going to shift to Arthur. But before I do, I want to thank Supervisor Bone for reaching out proactively, both to myself and to Merced County Supervisor Darren McDaniel, who is the chair of Golden State Finance Authority. On the request that's before you today, unfortunately, by doing so, we were able to add that request to our upcoming Golden State Finance Authority Executive Committee meeting. So I want to thank the board because assuming you approve the letter, it'll be timely. We'll be able to include that in a meeting and have it be considered at that upcoming executive committee meeting next week. So thank you for that. With that, if Arthur is available online, I'll turn it to him.
Hi, thank you, Pat. Can folks hear me?
Yes.
Okay, hi. So hi, folks. I'm Arthur Wyleen. I'm general counsel for RCRC and its affiliated entities, including Golden State Finance Authority, which is the CEQA lead agency for this project. For those who don't know me, prior to that, coming to RCRC, I was the Tahama County Council for many years. So for better or for worse, this isn't my first rodeo, either with CEQA or with large and potentially controversial projects in general. I am very sorry that I couldn't be there in person today. It's a necessary hazard of having children that require transportation to a wide and dizzying right event. So I'd like to thank Pat for putting this slide kind of up on the screen because I do think it does a really good job of sort of transitioning between talking about the project in general and the interaction between that and the environmental review process that we're currently going through. And I think that first bullet point is a very important one to keep in mind for all those who are reviewing the DEIR, kind of thinking about this project, because it really sets out what the purpose of the project is, which is wildfire mitigation and forest health benefits. Our ultimate goal is to increase the pace and scale of forest fire fuel reduction projects and treatment activities for ultimately for life safety purposes, literally to ensure the literal survival of affected rural communities. And I think that's important because oftentimes, when I hear folks kind of casually talking about the project sort of out in the community, I'll hear it referred to as a pellet project or the pellet project. And that's not really quite it. From our perspective, and this is kind of, I think, borne out of the EIR, you won't actually see the word pellets mentioned in our project objectives, Section 2.2 of the EIR. What you'll see is that the actual objectives of this project are forest health, wildfire mitigation. And pellets, as we understand them, are really a means to an end of increasing that pace and scale, of providing an outlet for that material and basically providing the returns necessary to keep those treatment projects going in the long term and not dependent on kind of the intermittent state and federal subsidies that are kind of currently getting those projects done. And if you'll also notice, I know one of the questions that has sort of come up is why have you looked at other things? Our EIR actually does include, as Chapter 4, for those who are looking at it, does include a fairly detailed analysis of some of the other potential things that can be done with sort of that residual material and whether they would be viable and environmentally superior. Now, as an aside, it doesn't appear that they are, and the reasons for that are kind of explained in fairly good detail. But that is something that we've looked at and certainly encourage and encourage comment on. Now, while the ultimate goal of this project is, you know, sort of improving life safety as we've described it, we have, as we are required to do by CEQA, evaluated the full range of impacts and attempted to mitigate those impacts to the maximum extent feasible. And in particular, as you'll kind of see here, we do recognize that the number of aspects of the project, both the facility and forest operations and the transportation, are going to have air emissions. There's no question about it. We'll go into what those air emissions are and what they look like in fairly extensive detail. Now, at the end of the day, from a policy perspective, the trade-off between life safety and potential air emissions, that's ultimately a policy determination for our elected officials on the Golden State Finance Authority Board of Directors. But as we are required by CEQA, not only have we evaluated those things, but we have endeavored to mitigate them to the maximum extent feasible sort of within the project objectives. And some of those things, and again, this is kind of getting maybe a little bit to the detail of the EIR, but I'm sure there are going to be a lot of folks here that do that. You know, some of those things are actually physically baked into the project in terms of best available control technologies and control mechanisms that go beyond what's regulatorily required. When we first started this, you know, I didn't know what selective non-catalytic reduction was. Turns out, it's a fairly effective and very expensive mechanism for reducing oxides of nitrogen production. And we have them at both facilities. And that's kind of sort of been generally our, you know, sort of approach toward design features. We've also got a number of mitigation measures, large and small, that were identified through the environmental review process as things that can be done to further reduce the emissions from the project. And again, we have attempted to do those things to the maximum extent we can and still have a viable project. And it may include everything from installing EV charging, required worker van pools, and a commitment to use renewable diesel. I mean, there's really a wide, wide range of measures, and we certainly encourage folks to review those and comment on them. And I will note that this commitment sort of extends, and sort of this approach extends to other areas as well. One of the things we heard a lot about during sort of the initial public meetings that we'll talk about on the project that we've had many of has been concern over sort of the fire risks associated with producing and handling pellets. So we've included fire prevention and protection mechanisms that actually go beyond the current state-of-the-art of the industry and kind of into the sort of cutting edge academic literature in terms of what you can do to make these facilities as safe as possible. And again, that's all detailed in the DEIR. And again, we're certainly looking for folks to both take a critical eye at that and tell us if they see anything else. Now, I think it's worth noting that aside from the pure CEQA requirements, we've also gone beyond traditional CEQA analysis in a number of ways. Now, I'm tempted to say we've gone beyond what CEQA requires. I think there are maybe some CEQA purists out there who would say that there's no end to what CEQA requires, so I won't phrase it quite that way. But what I will say is we've gone beyond what is conventionally done in a couple of areas. Most notably, we have done full lifecycle analyses for both criteria air pollutants and the air quality section and for THGs. And in doing this, we've evaluated a wide array of factors that we've both heard people talk about. It showed up in the literature on lifecycle analyses, including overseas transport, you know, combustion of pellets for fuel, and some of the potential offsets in terms of avoided wildfire because that's the point of doing these projects in the first place, the increased carbon sequestration benefits that healthy forests have. And, you know, to a certain extent, to the extent that we can try to evaluate this, the potential offset if some or even all of these pellets are replacing coal, which we anticipate that at least some of them will do in the countries where they end up getting burned. Now, as you will see, there are, for those who dive in, I expect there will be many, there are a lot of, you know, pieces of, points of speculation. We don't know where combustion will occur. We don't know where transport's going to occur. There's a lot, we don't know the technology that's going to be available at the time. Ultimately determining whether those are net whatever is very, very difficult to do. But because we wanted our decision-makers and ultimately the public to really have the full range of what that could look like, we've actually gone into that in far greater detail than I think I've seen with at least any CEQA document that I've looked at. The other thing we did in this one is really beyond CEQA. We did do a fairly extensive, we had an economics consultant, Impact Infrastructure, come in and really do certain economics analysis. What would these facilities mean, both at both, you know, what would these facilities mean in terms of economic benefit for the surrounding communities? Now, producing, I think, I think the way we phrased it in the EIR is, you know, economic development in historically under-invested and overlooked communities, although that is certainly secondary to the life and to the life safety benefits of the project. It is one of the project objectives, and it is ultimately very important to our organization, our elected officials. And so we actually have done a fairly deep dive in that for anybody who's seriously interested. So that's kind of sort of the, you know, sort of the overview of our approach. Obviously, this is not a substitute for, you know, reading the EIR and any of the other materials that we have out there. It's really kind of intended to sort of indicate the frame that we've been approaching this through. And I think I'm ready for the next slide, Pat.
There you go.
Okay, thank you. So this is kind of a slide that sort of indicates sort of where we are and sort of the process moving outward. Now, as Pat indicated, you know, we do anticipate, at this board's request, taking an item forward to extend the comment period to our GSFA Executive Committee. Obviously, that will alter some of these dates. But just generally speaking, to kind of orient, we actually started the CEQA process even before this date was noted. We actually put out an initial notice of preparation, I believe in November of 2022. We did a fair amount of analysis over those next few months, did a good bit of listening, and ultimately re-scoped the project and issued a revised notice of preparation June 1, 2023. Spent the next slightly over a year, maybe a little bit, a little bit less than a year and a half, doing, basically doing the hard work of CEQA analysis, and there's a good bit of it, and then put out the draft EIR October 22, 2024. So as currently scoped, the public review period and public comment period for the draft EIR began on the 22nd, and we put out a 60-day comment period through December 23, 2024. Just for background, the CEQA minimum comment period for an EIR of this nature is 45 days. The CEQA guidelines say basically that a DEIR public comment period, I think the way they put this, should not be longer than 60 days, except under unusual circumstances. That's obviously what, you know, when this gets brought to our elected officials, what they will be considering. And certainly, that's very much a discretionary decision for them to consider. We do have what we're thinking of as introductory public meetings on the EIR. Really, the intent here is to sort of just tell people kind of what it is, orient them to it. Obviously, we will take public comment, but we expect public comment to come in in writing for quite some time thereafter. But we have three of those meetings. We had one last night in Lassen County. We have one tomorrow down in Stockton and one next week in Tuolumne County. Now, I did take the liberty of kind of listening into some of the comment that I know your board received last week. And I did get the sense that maybe some of the commenters had the idea or maybe the concern that these public meetings were the only opportunity to provide public comment. And I just want to say that that is certainly not the way it is. There are lots and lots and lots of other opportunities, regardless of whether we extend the comment period or not. But certainly, if we do, written comments, which is again, for those who've been in the CEQA process, typically where a lot of the meat is, those obviously are accepted throughout the entire public comment period. Further, there is going to be a public hearing in front of the GSFA Board of Directors when the final EIR is brought forward for certification. Comments can be made basically up until and even during that public hearing on the project. So there's lots and lots and lots of opportunities for folks to review this, review the document, make themselves familiar with it, and obviously provide public comment. It's also worth noting that in addition to the comment on the environmental document in a technical sense, there's also additional opportunities to comment on the project itself. And a lot of the things that we've heard, some of them are technical CEQA comments, but a lot of them are really policy questions and concerns about the project itself. And that doesn't end when the CEQA process is over because once the CEQA process is complete, assuming in fact that the GSFA Board of Directors certifies the EIR and approves the project, which I've been staffed for long enough to never assume anything, but assuming that they do, then it moves to the responsible agencies, which are the counties, the Port of Stockton, and the resource agencies, who will consider their aspects of the project as well. And all of them have public hearing requirements and public meeting requirements that will provide yet further opportunities for input. So this is something that definitely, there's very public and very many opportunities for folks to get involved. Next slide, please. So I think it's worth noting, just for way of background, particularly when we talk about, you know, sort of these policy concerns about the project. And indeed, there's, I'll go out and say, I think that there's some probably policy disagreement about the basic concept of whether fuel reduction work is a good idea or not. There have been many, many opportunities to talk about this. I mean, we've had this project, obviously. We've been working on the environmental review process for a couple of years now. And you can see that we've really been sort of reaching out and listening to folks in the communities that are most directly affected by the project. And we have, to the very extent that we feasibly can, we've really tried to take that and be responsive as we can in the DEIR. So some of the things that you see with regard to, for example, the fire risk reduction, fire risk reduction and fire protection mechanics at the plants, a lot of that is really directly responsive to things that we heard at these meetings. And we're going to continue listening and doing the best that we can to be responsive. So next slide, please. Okay, little bit of basics for CEQA in terms of just sort of how this project is structured. Golden State Finance Authority, which is a joint powers authority comprised of 40 rural California counties and with a board of directors comprised of one elected county supervisor from each county, is the project lead agency. GSFA was responsible for creating the GSNR nonprofit entity. It's responsible for appointing several of its board members. And it is also the one who is responsible for both funding the project and for basically approving the forest projects under the master stewardship agreement that it has with the United States Forest Service. It's also the only public agency that actually has oversight and control over all aspects of the project. Obviously, Tuolumne County, Lassen County, Port of Stockton, you know, have their pieces, but GSFA is the only agency that sees the entire thing. And that's why it's the CEQA lead agency. And it ultimately will both review the EIR. If the board so determines, it will certify the final EIR. And it's also going to be the one that approves the project. This project is going to be carried out through a public-private partnership agreement between GSFA and GSNR that is going to set forth all of the commitments that are in the EIR and basically set forth the approval and monitoring structure that's detailed, I think, in fairly good detail in Chapter 2 of the EIR and really kind of make that a thing. Aside from GSFA, there are also other agencies whose approval will be needed. Those are the responsible agencies, obviously County of Lassen, County of Tuolumne, Port of Stockton. There are also resource agencies, some resource agency permits we anticipate needing for various aspects of the project construction operation. They are also responsible agencies. And of course, there's the project proponent, which is GSNR, which will execute the project under the guidance and oversight of GSFA and obviously in compliance with the various permit conditions that come out through the CEQA and permitting process. Next slide, please. Okay, and last but not least, for those who are interested in submitting comments, here are the ways you can do so. Obviously, there are the two introductory public meetings. But as I indicated, those are merely the beginning of the process, not the end of the process. Comments are going to be accepted and responded to for at least another couple of months. And again, depending on what this board does and what our GSFA Executive Committee does, potentially for longer than that as well. And I will say, obviously, we have, I don't think any agency has ever put out an environmental document that they knew had flaws. But of course, you don't know what you don't know. That's why we want comments. We want this to be a good document. We want folks to really take a look at it. And if they see things that either don't make sense, they don't agree with, we can't guarantee that we'll agree with them, but we definitely want to hear and want to be able to respond to it. So that's my pitch. And I think that is all I've got right at the moment, unless there are questions. I will turn it back over to me.
That does conclude the formal part of the presentation, Supervisor Bone, but we're happy to take questions.
Did you? Supervisor Royal?
I'll take a first crack at it. I think more will come up, though. Thank you for coming to speak to us, and thank you to the person who's online as well. It is true that we got a presentation a few months ago, and I see that, you know, there have been public meetings about this. But the context has changed because last time, we had the notice of preparation. We had, you know, you presented information to us prior to the DEIR being released. So now that we have this extensive document to kind of react to, and we do have, you know, a representative from our board serving on the GSFA board and, you know, providing a leadership role in this project, we have sort of a different thing to talk about now. I appreciate this opportunity. You know, I had a couple of initial questions in response to the DEIR, if you don't mind me just kind of jumping right into a couple of questions.
I think that's what he's looking for, yeah.
And, you know, so I'll say two kind of disparate things, and then would love to hear a reaction. One of them is that, you know, I've, I think, looking at this document, the scale of the projects is pretty significant, especially for demonstration project. But I realized that, you know, for this to be financially viable, I imagine that it has to be done at scale. So this is a pretty significant project that we're looking at. And my background in forest health work is somewhat limited. I mean, I have developed forest health-related projects in the past. It's been a few years, and those were on a, you know, 800-ish acre scale, so quite small compared to what we're talking about. And I still recall just being struck by, once I started working on it, I think I had this idea that there would be benefit to pulling out all the biomass from the project, including merchantable timber, and finding a way to use that in some other fashion, whether that was selling some of the, you know, some of the wood, whether it was, you know, managing some of that, what we would call in this document, feedstock in a different way. And just the scale, even for an 800-acre project, of the amount of, like, physical material that needed to be moved, did not allow the project to pencil out. And there was an enormous push from, you know, state agencies to focus on prescribed fire to treat these areas for true forest health benefits fire to treat these areas for true forest health benefits, rather than expending the monetary costs, the human labor costs, you know, putting in new roads or fixing new roads to be able to pull that amount of biomass out of what was a relatively small area. So just the, you know, the millions of dollars in costs for equipment and personnel and the infrastructure needed to support those huge, huge crews being on the ground is something that I was blown away by. I had this idea that, you know, swampers and sawyers would be able to go in there and, you know, pull it all out, and we're going to, you know, do something very kind of, you know, labor-intensive but not at that scale, and it just didn't pencil out. So what I've been seeing around, so I think the two disparate questions that come out of this are, on the one hand, I don't really see, and maybe you can point to me in the DEIR where this is covered, the evaluation of those costs for the infrastructure for the crews and the actual, like, physical, where are the crews going to go? How are they going to be there to do the work on this scale? And then I don't see that sort of evaluated as an environmental impact, and, you know, I realize that we're, there's a lot of other impacts here, but if you could point me to that, that'd be great. And then, you know, I know that environmental documents are about evaluating alternatives, and really like to understand how prescribed fire as an alternative was evaluated. I realize the goal of this is to come up with something that's a merchantable product, but can you kind of point me in that direction as well?
Sure, maybe I can provide an initial response, and then Arthur can add into it. And I think one thing I note in terms of size and scale of the project is that SEQA is meant to evaluate the maximum potential size of the project, so that you see the maximum potential environmental impact of the project. The reality is, once we get through the SEQA process, we'll need to reassess for the very factors you described in terms of what is the right size of the project. It could end up being something smaller in scale as a result, but SEQA allows that latitude as long as we don't go over the size of it. I think we're on to some very important things that we're going to have to assess in the future, once we get through this process. As far as prescribed fire, RCRC is extremely supportive of prescribed fire, and I wouldn't describe it as an either-or, but rather as complementary with mechanical treatment. The challenge with prescribed fire is the combination of available days in terms of air quality and when there's available burn days, and secondly, humidity in terms of when it is safe to burn. And so my understanding from the US Forest Service and those on the ground is that there is a very constrained window for when prescribed fire can be legally and safely done, and that window doesn't allow them to get close to meeting the 1 million or potentially 2 million acre goal that is out there. And so consequently, mechanical treatment is going to have to be part of the solution with prescribed fire to meet those acreage goals as established by state policy. Arthur, did you have anything you wanted to add?
No, I think with regard to prescribed fire, you definitely hit it. It's not identified as a project alternative, because we don't view these as an either-or. Prescribed fire is something, indeed, I think one of the things we actually identify as a project objective, is we have, and this is something we've heard from a number of sources, there are areas where prescribed fire can't be safely introduced because the fuel loading is too high. So one of the things we're actually looking at doing are potentially pre-treatments to make an area so that prescribed fire is something that can be introduced. So we don't view it as an either-or. And to Pat's point, we don't think it would fundamentally hit the pace and scale goals we were looking for as just an or for prescribed fire, but it's definitely something that we view as an and. With regard to the crews out there, so we talked about costs and then talked about impacts. So ultimately, the purpose of our SEQA document, any SEQA document, you know, isn't economic analysis, it's environmental analysis. So we actually do have economic analysis that we've been doing, obviously, this is, there are business plans that go along with this, but ultimately, the purpose of the EIR isn't to evaluate this sort of cost area. So if you're looking for costs, this is the wrong document for it. We do, however, talk extensively about impacts, and indeed, pretty much every impact chapter talks to the extent relevant about the effects of having these crews go out in the forest. If you're looking for the most detailed discussion of what that looks like in terms of the equipment that's going to be used and what that means for the forest, what that means for the environment, the two chapters you're going to want to look at are the air quality chapter, a lot of the technical analysis, the technical detail is in the AQ chapter, and then that in turn is relied upon by the other chapters. But there's really extensive discussion of what equipment's going to be used, how big the crews are going to be, what we think that's going to look like. The bio chapter talks about sort of the physical impacts of having that kind of work done in the forest, including everything from the, up to, we use the same NEPAC Class 6 categorical exclusion limitation on dirt road construction, but what that looks like, potential stream crossings. You know, if you're interested, I can kind of go through and identify every page where that's talked about in those two chapters or even throughout. It would take me a bit to do here, because it really is kind of pervasive, particularly in those chapters, but also to varying extents in all of the others as well. But it's definitely something that got looked at, and that's a major, major component of the project, and we wouldn't be doing our job if that didn't get investigated in pretty good detail.
Thank you. Yeah, I was also looking at Section 3.12 or Chapter 3.12, which, you know, goes into the workforce elements, and, you know, I'll just, my hope is that, you know, the local folks would be employed by this. I think in the project I worked on in the past, we hoped that and found that we would be transporting crews from out of the area for some of the more specialized work. And so, you know, that, those transportation impacts were just one more thing to consider when we did our, you know, greenhouse gas evaluation of all the project. And so to kind of look at that, you know, from my limited experience again with it and scale it up was something that, yeah, I hear you that it's covered in biological resources, covered in air quality, and, you know, and in this housing and workforce chapter to an extent, but it's almost a cumulative impact that I, I just, it seems to be kind of piecemealed out. That's, I guess, more of a comment than a question, but I'll probably have more questions as we go.
Supervisor, I'd just note that we do see labor and housing as a significant challenge that's going to have to be addressed, and one of the ways we're starting is by partnering with labor. So even as we look towards the potential for construction, we partner with the Building Trades Council and with the Northern California Carpenter. We've signed agreements with them, and as part of that, we've talked about how can we build up the labor force even within those local areas using their apprenticeship programs and such that they have. And hopefully, that's a model that we can continue to build on as we go forward, so I just wanted to quickly cite that example.
May I interject here one more time, since you brought up unions? It's something that I found interesting also is that, at least as of my last kind of looking into this, which was sometime last year, there's no union that includes the folks that do the forest work in, on the ground. So if they're, you know, I don't know if the Laborers Union or a different union has kind of entered that space. You're nodding like, I guess they have.
I don't know the answer either, but I understand the question, yes.
Okay, yeah, I mean, it's a huge, again, a huge number of people employed by, in this space that don't traditionally have any kind of organized labor training program in that particular way, so it seems like that's an opportunity for additional training and safety and organization there.
Supervisor Wilson?
I have just a couple of questions. One is, you'd mentioned sort of a tiered, I guess, approval or analysis process where you're saying that basically there's like this EIR process, and then there's the localized part. Will there be public hearings in relation to those particulars communities?
Yes.
That will have, and so can you sort of talk about what those particular, either permits or what those analysis might be?
Yeah, and maybe I'll turn it to Arthur, who might be able to give you more specific rundown of that.
Certainly. So, yes, we anticipate requiring major discretionary approvals from the County of Lassen, the County of Toolumee, and the Port of Stockton. So at the County of Lassen, the County of Toolumee, we anticipate seeking a development agreement, and I believe Lassen also requires a conditional use permit. I believe in Toolumee, it's, they have a different name for the type of permit than it is there. But in both cases, because of the approvals that we seek, there are, in addition to all of the SEQA stuff, this is after the complete SEQA process, in just considering the project and the conditions that get attached to the project, which are not limited to SEQA, the counties can go beyond that. In both of the counties, we anticipate that there will be public hearings, just as you would do in your county, both at the planning commissions, these will be notice public hearings, and then once with planning commission recommendation at the Board of Supervisors level as well. So in each county, we anticipate there will be at least two sets of public hearings. With regard to port process, they are, their process is a little bit different. They basically, this is sort of a property transaction like a lease, which we have not gotten, you know, we don't have that with them yet. I know there's been some concern down in the Stockton community. We are not ahead of the port. They are very much kind of waiting to see, like everybody else is, sort of what the environmental impacts are before they make their decisions. But they also act in accordance with the Brown Act, so they have agendized items. Information is brought before them, and the public is given the same opportunity that they would have here to provide input, and if they have a concern, to raise it for ultimately the officials that sit there to make the decision. So there will be public hearings and public meetings on the project, separate from the SEQA process, or I should say, in addition to the SEQA process, in all three of those communities. I hope that answered the question.
Yeah, I mean, yes. You had mentioned the air quality section as being somewhat challenging, and, you know, it's like over 200 pages just for that section in this report, and so I'm just wondering, what are the most challenging air quality issues that you feel like are, that you're facing in this project through this analysis?
So I don't know if challenging is quite necessarily the word I would use. I mean, at the end of the day, looking at the project, both the impacts that can be mitigated to a level of insignificance, the impacts that can't be mitigated to a level of insignificance, so thus remain significant and unavoidable, and whether those trade-offs ultimately are worth the life safety benefits, that's ultimately a policy. I get to the county council thing, that's ultimately a policy decision for my electeds. In terms of, you know, where are the areas of impact, I think they're fairly, or the areas of significant and avoidable impact that we don't believe can be mitigated to a level of insignificance, I think they basically come out in sort of, I'll say, three areas. So one, particulate matter, doing work in the forest generates dust, and that is, that's an impact that's just not avoidable. There are things you can do to minimize it, you can reduce speeds, you can do watering, there's all sorts of things you can do, and we do them, but ultimately, dust is dust. The facilities themselves, they do generate some PMs, they also generate some NOx and oxides of nitrogen. And again, we do have sort of state-of-the-art equipment to limit those, but ultimately, with the level of limitation, we can't say, hey, we think this is below a threshold, we think this is insignificant, so we've tagged that as a significant and unavoidable impact. And greenhouse gas is always a little bit of a challenge to evaluate. We do go out and quantify our greenhouse gas emissions. We also do our level best to quantify what we think some of the offsets are. It's notoriously tricky to adopt a threshold for greenhouse gases. The SEQA guidelines are just not that fantastic, and the case law is ever-changing, but we have tagged that as significant and unavoidable as well. So those are the areas. Again, we haven't tried to hide them, we've been very upfront with what they are. We think ultimately, from the staff perspective, that the benefits of the project are still something that even, you know, even with all those cards on the table are worth moving forward for, but that ultimately is a policy decision for our electeds.
Thanks. And then I'm somewhat familiar with the Port of Stockton. As in my past, I've toured that port, and it has a fairly, I would say, under-resourced neighborhood adjacent to it, and it sort of makes you wonder sometimes about when the port is talking about all the value and that it brings to the community, especially from a financial perspective. You would think that maybe the neighboring neighborhood would see some of those benefits. And, you know, that, there, it looks like there's, I think there's a 50-megawatt biomass plant adjacent to the port or a part of the port right now, as well as a coal exporting facility. So there is some pretty significant impacts already occurring, and so I'm just kind of in that neighborhood and, and so I'm just, I guess I'm asking is like, is there an accumulative analysis done, not just in relation to the environmental impacts, but the social impacts that are occurring within that sphere?
Maybe what I'll do is talk about some of the work we're doing with the Environmental Justice Community in South Stockton, and then I'll turn to Arthur in terms of whether there's any SEQA items that relate to it. But we began meeting with members of the community, as you saw on the slide, I guess now I want to say a year and a half ago plus, and as a result of that, we began to develop relationships with at least two environmental justice groups down there. One is the Reinvent South Stockton Coalition, the other's the Environmental Justice Coalition for Water. And the intent of those partnerships is really to do there what we do for rural communities with RCRC. RCRC helps identify rural communities that are disadvantaged and under-resourced, and we try to go out and bring resources to them. So we've been working with those two environmental justice communities to identify what are the priorities for those communities in South Stockton, and how can we begin to help them? And we're not waiting for GSNR to do that. We're actually working with one of those groups right now to develop a grant to try to get some of those initial priorities funded, just as we would for an RCRC member community. And we're also simultaneously building out what are those community priorities, so that we can actually develop a partnership plan, so that we can formalize in the future what Golden State Natural Resources' contribution to the community might be through that investment plan, assuming we get to a point where GSNR is proceeding, noting, though, that we're not waiting for that to happen in terms of RCRC partnering with those groups. So that's what we're trying to do to be a good community member there. We look at it, like I say, we have a footprint on our rural counties, we're used to doing that work in rural counties. We haven't traditionally been in San Joaquin County or South Stockton, so we're partnering with the Environmental Justice Community there to figure out how we can be a good community partner. So that's what's happening there. Arthur, I'll see if you have anything you want to add from a SEQA perspective.
The only things I'd note are that we did do, as part of our SEQA analysis, we did do both, obviously, air quality analyses for San Joaquin, and also did accumulative impact analyses, just as you would for any other SEQA project. However, we did go a little bit above and beyond in this area as well. The typical mode of doing this kind of air quality analysis is typically on, is typically air district-wide, you look at basically, or county-wide, you look at the emissions within that sort of larger geographic area, and you compare them to the thresholds applicable to those larger geographic areas. So one of the things we didn't think that that was, although that's compliant with SEQA, we didn't think was as fully informative potentially as it could be, because a lot of the impacts within both the San Joaquin, Fairland, or Cooch Control District, and/or a lot of the air emissions within the district and within the County of San Joaquin don't actually occur in the vicinity of the port. They actually occur with regard to rail or ship transport that is not immediately in the vicinity of the port, but still within the district, or with regards to forest projects, whether or not some little pieces of our working area kind of come down there, and we made some fairly conservative assumptions. So in addition to that SEQA analysis, we also did, I think we referred to the city of Stockton, but we also did analyses of emissions occurring within that specific area as well. So both we would understand what those are, and the community could look back and go, okay, this is what this actually means for the community, they're not hiding it in these larger district numbers. So we really did try to be as sort of, you know, maximally disclosing, as it were, both with regard to our traditional SEQA analyses, but also go a little bit of a step further so the community could really understand, this is what it means, this is what it means here. I hope that's helpful.
Yeah, and that, those are my questions for now, thanks.
Supervisor Maughon?
Well, thank you, Chair, and thank you, Pat, for being here today, as well as your partner. Very much appreciate that. And I don't think anybody would argue that we need to do something about our forest health conditions. There's no doubt in my mind about that. I've been involved in forestry for much of my professional career. I think the question is how we do it, and, you know, unfortunately, Congress has not really been appropriating the money to really be able to do a lot of the important work that needs to be done. And I'm not talking about clear-cutting and whole-scale forest removal, and I don't believe that's what you're talking about either, although with large industrial projects, sometimes the tail can start wagging the dog, so to speak, in that you make this massive investment, and now you need to procure materials, and that can have its own potential impacts in terms of the kinds of activities that occur, et cetera. It's always been amazing to me that we don't put the money out there to create jobs and to keep our communities safer from doing the forest health treatments that could help do that, if they're done properly at the right scale. But when the fires happen, we open the checkbook and spend hundreds of millions, if not billions of dollars, on suppression, which ultimately, almost all these fires finally get put out by the rains. Thank goodness, we're getting the rains, and our fires are pretty well dampened out at this point. And we actually had a less of a fire season this year than we've had the last three or four years, which have been really dramatic, as the lightning belt seems to be shifting further towards the coast. It used to be mostly Hayfork, Weaverville around here, and now we're getting it in Will Creek pretty consistently. There's a lot of theories and conjecture around why that's happening. Regardless, we spend an unlimited amount of money afterwards, and that's when lives are lost from firefighters and homes and structures and everything else, rather than putting that money up front. So I fully put a lot of responsibility on our Congress, you know, to actually appropriate the monies to do good work. And we've come a long way in terms of understanding what that good work looks like, and, you know, not overdoing it, as I've mentioned. So that's important to recognize. But, you know, I generally, on these large industrial efforts, I'm somewhat skeptical for a lot of reasons. One of them is the carbon footprint becomes very much upside down, you know, the further you start hauling things. Even locally, you know, we have one biomass plant currently, and it's pretty old and has a lot of emission control issues that have been brought up to our local energy provider, you know, energy of choice. And, you know, it'd be nice if we had a brand-new state-of-the-art facility that had all the modern technology that we've now been able to create around this. I mean, 40 years ago, an electrostatic precipitator was not what it is today in terms of emission controls. There was going to be a new plant, hopefully built out in Corbel, just east of Arcata, for North Fork lumber. We invested significant money into a feasibility analysis, looking at that, working with the Forest Service and with Schmidt Bauer, the owner of that plant, or the owner of the, well, the leasie of that plant from Green Diamond. And it just just didn't pencil out, so, you know, all the wood waste from that plant goes to Anderson. It's, you know, four miles, 400, four hours away, over 100 miles away, and the carbon footprint becomes pretty negative, so to speak, you know, in that relationship of burning far more fossil fuels than the energy actually produced from the conversion to electricity. That's always been an issue with the biomass industry, there used to be a plant in Blue Lake, back in the 80s and 90s, called Ultra Power, that was supposed to take advantage of all these fuels from the forest, and they never burned a single stick from the forest, they basically burned chips, because the chip market was depressed, and they could get it cheaply, but when the chip market increased in value, they started to want to burn tires, and luckily, their conditional use permit didn't allow them to do that. That would have been a real nightmare for that community in terms of emissions and all those kinds of things. There are plants around the world that burn plastics, and tires, and all kinds of things, but we don't do that here. So, we don't have a new biomass plant, unfortunately, locally. There's also been a lot of advancements, as you probably know, in small mobile biomass conversion systems with curtain burners, and the little power plants you can hook up to the curtain burner, but what we don't have is a battery-packed trailer that we can take all those units out to the forest, to the landing where these things are being produced, and literally have almost no transportation involved in the conversion, but it's a small scale, small to, small, medium, it's not a large-scale thing that's going to handle all of our problems, but I don't think there's any one solution. I mean, on my property, I thin and trim and limb, and I turn that into roundwood to heat my home, right? So that's a pretty closed-loop system there, very small scale. But there's a lot more of that happening now with all the CAL FIRE exemptions, and the ability to get your licensed timber operator license quite easily, and those kinds of things. So, again, this biomass issue is complicated, and we're not going to solve it with one solution, it's going to be a whole lot of different elements that we put into place. You know, this particular project is so huge on scale, I know you're only going 100 miles an hour, 100 miles out radius, but it's still, a lot of fossil fuels being burned to haul it, transport it, produce it, make it into pellets, and then ship it somewhere, wherever that might be. There are a lot of articles online about whether or not it is or isn't cleaner than burning coal, and, you know, I'm certainly not an expert in that area, but there's a lot of online sources that talk a lot about that particular issue. I guess, you know, when I look at the alternatives analysis and the DEIR, I didn't see anywhere where you analyzed looking at smaller systems. You just looked at biochar, and a couple of other things, but you didn't look at, well, what about maybe 10 plants that are more locally-sighted, so they're only hauling things 10 or 20 miles, or whatever, and they produce electricity, you know, from that small plant that is used locally, rather than pellets and shipping and all the rest of it? I didn't see any analysis of that as an alternative, I really think you need to look at that. I mean, back in the day, hospitals and schools were heated by boilers, where they used wood residue to heat their hospitals and schools, you know, with radiators, right, and all that kind of stuff. So that's a really old technology, it's been used for hundreds of years to heat homes, to heat other facilities and things like that, I didn't see any analysis of those kinds of things, and I really think you need to look at that. I do appreciate that there was a long discussion about valley fever, which is a huge issue already, you know, just from farming and the dust produced from tilling and everything else that happens in the valley, and it's a huge health concern, and it impacts, you know, lower-income communities much more than others that can afford healthcare and everything else. A lot of people without healthcare, you know, they just simply don't get the care they need timely, and end up with pneumonia or other death results, which are not a good thing. So I appreciate you spent a lot of time in there, and I think, you know, what your recommendations for mitigation in there are watering, you know, trying to keep the dust down, and also PPE, and things for the people on the forklifts, and the loaders, and everything else that are going to be exposed to a tremendous amount of dust, because that's what you're doing, is you're taking all the wood and making it into dust, or making it into small particle sawdust that then gets compressed with natural lignin, I was glad to read that, I was wondering, how do these pellets hold themselves together, and I was wondering if there was glue involved, and there is, but it's a natural glue. It's the lignin, as I understand it, that comes out of the wood material itself, the residue, so it's a naturally-occurring, organic glue element that holds these things into little pellets. I was concerned about the bug issue, you know, start transporting things internationally, but it's not raw wood, so I'm assuming, I didn't have a chance to read the entire DEIR, I really focused on the executive summary, which was quite lengthy, 70-some pages, I believe, 60-something. But I'm assuming that through the heating process, because all this wood gets seriously heated in order to turn it into pellets, so is the bug issue being dealt with in that way? You know, for transporting stuff internationally, that's a big concern typically with wood, but more so with raw wood, or raw logs, things like that, so can you speak to that issue?
I've written that one down, so we'll see if Arthur knows the answer, I'm going to admit I do not, but Arthur?
Um, so yes, my belief is that both the heat and the pressure, because there's pressure involved in creating the pellets during the pelletizing process as well, that being said, we can go back and check that one with the project engineers, so your understanding is the same as mine, but I will triple-check that, so you're getting a real answer from an engineer, not from a lawyer.
I appreciate that, thank you. You know, you also mentioned the intermittent funding subsidies issue, this has long been a real issue in biomass facilities. Basically, they've never penciled out without serious transportation subsidies. So they currently exist, but there is no guarantee they will continue to exist. You know, we're pretty fickle in this country about what we subsidize, and what's the flavor of the month, or of the year, and where we're going to put our subsidies. At one point, we were highly subsidizing solar panels, but a lot of that's decreased in recent years. You know, so, those are concerning issues in terms of longevity of a project of this nature. Again, my preference would be that we be really careful about where we're getting this biomass, and how it's, you know, what kind of forest health treatments are actually happening, and that that's monitored really carefully, and that we have smaller-scale operations that are more tuned to the local community there with less transportation, less impacts on global warming from those emissions, but I am absolutely convinced that a lot of areas are going to burn, I mean, you drive up into the Sierras and you see, especially going to Yosemite or other places, you see vast areas that are just completely torched over. It's not, you know, beneficial burns that are burning in the understory, they're canopy claiming fires that are very catastrophic, per se, and they seem to be increasing dramatically. I do go to the task force, the wildfire task force quarterly meetings as often as I can, it is certainly very, very concerning, so I do often agree that the fact is a lot of stuff's going to burn, and so our choice is how we burn it, and do we lose homes and lives in the process, or do we get upfront on this stuff and do some things that can be valuable with it? So I'm not anti-biomass by any means, I'm pro-biomass if it's done at the right scale and in the right way, and we're not overdoing it on our forests, so those are all very big concerns that I have in regards to those kinds of things. The crew housing was already brought up, that is certainly a huge issue, and actually the crews themselves, you know, and technically, I believe this work has to be paid at prevailing wages if it's publicly funded, that reduces the amount of work that can happen, but it certainly helps support families a whole lot better, and I'm very much a union supporter, not that I don't support merit shops as well, but often, they also have to pay that prevailing wage, if it's publicly-funded activities, that's really a requirement, I know that building trades are going to be all over that one, and there's been a lot of discussion about, you know, what is the appropriate wage rate and wage classification for this work? And CAL FIRE themselves are in discussions with the building trades about, is it just a landscape laborer, or is it something else? Because there is certainly a heck of a lot of work to do out there, and that is very concerning in many ways. I guess lastly, I will say that, yeah, I would appreciate, I appreciate what you said earlier about getting it timely into your agenda, so depending on what happens here today, and I look forward to the discussion, as was mentioned earlier, we're kind of separating that part of the discussion, but perhaps we're getting close to that, as I'm the last board member, well, actually Supervisor Bone hasn't spoke yet, and that's important, but I will say that I would appreciate the extension, I think there's a lot of concern, and with the holidays and everything, I think the argument could be made, it'd be good to be able to give as much time as necessary to really adequately hear from the communities, and appreciate you coming here today, thank you.
Thank you Supervisor, and maybe two quick points, one is, we share the concern around funding, and we're actively advocating, as you might imagine, both in Sacramento and DC around that, I only have bad news on that front, in that GSNR was awarded 3.4 million, separate from this project, to get piles out of the forest to existing biomass users, that's great. The bad news is the Forest Service leadership said they expect their funding to decrease going into this current fiscal year for them, and so their outlook was not promising in terms of funding. The second thing I might ask Arthur to briefly touch on is the guardrails portion of the draft environmental impact report, which speaks to the feedstock procurement concerns you expressed. Arthur, could you touch on that briefly?
Certainly, actually, thank you, there were two items, I was hoping to have a chance to, maybe provide additional information on Supervisor Madron, this is one of them. So Supervisor, check out Section 2.4 of the EIR, we go into some detail, both about what types of materials we will and will not accept from other people, and what our own projects will and will not look like. And in response to a number of concerns we heard during that swath of public meetings that we held, and in conversations with a wide array of stakeholders, we've also included some fairly detailed metrics for the oversight, review, and ultimately, public reporting of what those residuals, what those projects, what those sources look like, to ensure that not just we have pretty promises on paper about what we will and will not take, and what those projects have to look like, but there's also mechanisms for ultimately public accountability, and elected official accountability for them. So we've really, we've heard this, this is a concern that we're very sensitive to, both because we want our project to be, as it says in the environmental document, that's a legal requirement that we have to make CEQA mitigations enforceable, but also because we understand that that's generally good policy. So check that out, and certainly happy to have additional conversations if you think there are areas where that could be improved, because that's a major commitment that we have. On the other piece, I wanted to thank you for the comment on alternatives, so this is kind of one of the sort of frustrating areas of CEQA analysis, is picking your range of alternatives, has to be reasonable, but of course, there's a million different, for any given project, there's a million different things you can do, so coming up with, okay, well, which ones are feasible enough to review, is really, it's really more of an art than a science, so we definitely appreciate thoughts and input on that, and we'll go back, and again, I don't know what the answer to that is, and whether those mechanics are feasible, but definitely, that's a really, really good comment, and we really appreciate it.
Well, thank you very much, I appreciate that as well, and I guess my last two comments, I just drove up to Crater Lake a couple of weeks ago, and I saw probably a couple thousand piles, I mean, they're doing tremendous forest health work in an area to protect that national park and that national forest, and yeah, there's a lot of material, tremendous amount of material, just within a couple hundred feet of the road, on either side of the road, which is where they're concentrating their work in this first phase. The last thing I wanted to mention is that, you know, who you work with as partners to operate your facilities matters, and it's been proposed that it'll be DrACs, as I understand it. Now, maybe that's not a final decision that's made by you guys yet, or not?
Correct, there's been no decision on that front.
It's a public relations nightmare for you to be working with DrACs, given their, you know, all the online information about their performance to date in this country and in other countries, having tremendous amount of violations on an ongoing basis in regards to worker's safety, in regards to emissions controls, and general operations, fires, and all kinds of things, so I hope that's not who you're going to work with, and I hope you can find a responsible operator at whatever level you do decide to operate in, and I'm still not convinced that it's the right project to move forward with, frankly, but I just needed to mention that, because that's certainly been out there as a concern, so. So you're going to make that decision down the road, there's no, like, how's that going to work?
Correct, I mean, the first step is to get to the environmental review process, and then go out to the responsible agencies for the permitting process, and then, to get back to some of the original points that Supervisor Royal brought up, is to really assess size and scale within what's allowed within CEQA, given current market conditions at that point. At that point, we still need a private partner to be part of this, unless the state or federal agency move in in a bigger role. At that point, together with whoever that partner is, whether it's a state or federal agency, or a private partner, then we would be in a position to assess, okay, how do we operate this thing, and move on to that phase of it?
Okay, great, thank you very much, thank you Chair.
Go ahead, Supervisor.
All right, I just had a couple more, thank you. Sorry, I made very feverish comments throughout these documents, and had to pull them all up to find my questions again, so, two questions. I, I'm trying to understand, and this might be a, you know, a question for those with more of a legal background, I'm not clear on, you know, I know CEQA requires that, you know, there's a good faith effort at full disclosure, and that applies to, you know, the transportation impacts is what I'm thinking of in particular, and just seeking to understand the, let me pull up the right document here, the transport-to-market analysis, and I'm going to take a guess that outside of the Port of Stockton, like, once vessels carrying product leave the port and go out of the state of California, that that's just not part of CEQA analysis, because that's a part of transport-to-market that's outside of the state, is that true?
Two-fold answer, I'll turn to Arthur to provide it.
Okay, thank you.
Sure, so the answer is that is indeed beyond what most projects typically evaluate, however, we did in the lifecycle analysis portion, this is, it's in, we do it for both AQ and for GHGs, it's at the last section of the AQ and GHG chapter, we actually do quantify those transport emissions beyond California's jurisdictional boundaries, which like I said, that's where most traditional CEQA analyses end, we did go further than that. Now, I will note that the further out you get, there is a higher degree of speculation, we had to make some assumptions about where the product might go, and we're very clear that that, that these are just assumptions, to a point that Pat made earlier, you know, we haven't identified private partners, we haven't identified off-takers, so we did make some fairly conservative assumptions, which in turn result in fairly conservative large estimates of impact, but we actually did look at that, we did not omit it.
Okay, thank you, and then the last question was kind of an obscure appendix question, but under the energy calc section, there's, on the very last page, there's some analysis of energy calculations for six rivers, for redwood sawmill residuals, slash pile chips, tan oak, et cetera, dog fur, and I, because of the way the pages are formatted, I couldn't understand what that was connected to, so could you help clarify, that's under Appendix B7 energy calculations, why that's featured there?
Arthur?
Let me take that one offline, so it is entirely possible that that is a clerical error, because I don't think we'd be talking about six rivers, but like I said, let me, it's Appendix B7, let me go back and look at it and get you a real answer, rather than trying to figure it out on the fly while the entire public waits for me.
Okay, thank you, I was surprised to see that, so it'd be great to know.
We will get you an answer.
Well, Pat, thank you for being here, I remember being in Washington DC, and her name escapes me, but she was head of the Forest Service, and we met with the national, the head of the Forest Service, and they were quite accepting of this project, because they knew they had problems. This was nine years ago, and since then, there's all sorts of reports out of the University of Chicago and everything else, and what, the last three years, we've eaten up more than half of what we saved the previous 16 years in greenhouse gases, just in forest fires, and they needed...
One year of wildfire emissions.
Yeah, one year, yeah, and they needed to do something about it. I've been to, I've been to six or eight public meetings, the meeting in Bieber last night had 100 people there.
Over 100, yes.
And the two sites, I understand, a lot of little sites, but Safeway doesn't do that either, they don't build a lot of mini-markets, they build big stores to people, because that's the easiest way to contain everything, and what we've done is, we have taken old mill sites, where there used to be old mill workers, and these people were excited about the jobs, both in Toolumee and Lassen, and so that's a big faction. This was decided on, I think when this was decided on, there were 37 rural counties, we needed to do something, the counties, what can we do to help you, because the forest fires were being devastating. RCRC, over the last seven or eight years, has given almost $5 million to member counties that have suffered forest fire catastrophes, and just gifted those counties to get back on their feet and to help those counties, so that's what RCRC has done for their member communities, but we can't sustain that, so we had to do something. The EIR, very extensive, the reason was it took so long to get forward, and we've talked about this, both that, you know, what's taken so long, is because we keep having these public meetings, and questions keep getting asked, and we keep, you know, bringing this in. Is there something that's going to magically, I remember, I worked on all three of the power plants, when they had something to do with all three of the power plants when they were being built, and I remember when Mel built the one out here on the peninsula, you know, when the Murphys built the one in Scotia, you know, and then... when the Murphys built the one in Scotia, you know, and then Ultra Power, that was always built too small. It was only a 10-meg plant. That's why they could never make it work. It was just too small, and it just couldn't, it had to run full blast. And I know that Frank really tried to get that five-meg plant going, but it's California. It's kind of prohibitive to do a lot of this stuff. Port of Stockton's been a blessing to us, because they've been working with us, and the people around the community. Port of Stockton has made great environmental inroads. I think over half of their fleet is now electric. I think quite a bit. They've dropped their emissions drastically, and we hope to be part of that, and enjoy their successes on, you know, dropping these emissions. They get approximately 288 ships a year. I think we will average, full blower, I think it's...
Arthur may know the number off the top of his head. I don't want to misstate it.
The percentage doesn't throw them out of wh- I mean, it's not 50% more or anything like that. So, you know, so it's going to be, and it's going to be contained, and it's going to be, you know, dust control and everything else. We've looked at, you know, I've heard about biochar, you know, but they did a biochar, and they couldn't get rid of it, all of it from the USAW forests. The curtain vans, curtain vans are something new, and they're something that's coming along. Fairly inefficient, the ones we had up in Willow Creek didn't run as well as they should have, but they got rid of a lot of waste. That was the big thing. But the guys running them said they weren't the most efficient things in the world. So to have those running all over, looking at the emission controls and stuff. So this is the avenue that's been taken. This has been a long time. I appreciate Pat coming up. I understand that there's always going to be an element that, you know, let's just let it burn, or I'll come up with a better idea. Give me time. We've been working on this for eight, nine years now, and it's getting closer. So, I mean, hopefully, we'll be able to move forward on this, and go forward, because this is an answer to the problems we have. I asked Yana if she had, because she's been working on biomass and things, and she's been a little bit involved, if she had anything to say on this, from our UC cooperative.
Good morning, Chairs, members of the board staff. Yana Balakovic, Director of your Cooperative Extension Department. I'm also your county's forester, and I sit on the Wildfire Forest Resilience Task Force in many roles, including the Science Advisory Panel. And there's a lot of questions, a lot of great conversation today. And I'll maybe tag on a couple pieces that I think might be relevant to some of the conversation today. And, you know, I think the 90-day extension makes some sense, gives some more time for some thought and deliberation. And, you know, as you continue to sift through and look at the scale of the project, to think about the varying issues, and some of the unintended consequences that people might not be aware of. So I think that's relevant. To Supervisor Arroyo, you asked about prescribed fire, and I think prescribed fire is a terrific thing for us to have conversation about with. And I appreciate what Arthur Whalen said today about, it may not be your first entry. And I think the bootleg fire, which, I wish I had some visuals with this, and I think there's a pretty well-known slide that goes around, which shows an area where the bootleg fire burned through. It's in the Modoc Plateau, so it's similar to, in location, to where one of these facilities might be pulling from. So what you'll see is black everywhere, and then there's one section of forest that's green, and there's one section of forest that's black, and there's another section that's black. And so what you see is, that the section that's black is where there's no treatment, where nothing happened before, where there was no removal of small diameter material. There's one section there that was just thinning. So there was removal. It's black post-fire, and there's one section that's green, and it had thinning removal and prescribed fire. It required both treatments to basically be effective in the worst onslaught that, you know, the worst test of proof of concept that you would want to see. And so this recognition that we need to really be able to manage surface fuels as being a really key contributor to this, I think is an important element in this conversation. So, you know, what do you do as your first entry? How do you deal with all the material that's been built up? This is one alternative, and it's one pathway. And, you know, I'm confident in the forest managers that are going to be working at the national forest level, to be able to think about nesting those treatments, and being able to get that additive value. But it's oftentimes too difficult to do first entry with prescribed fire. And if you've been catching the national news, you'll know that the Forest Service suspended all prescribed fire this season in California, just last week. While we've had really successful work in burning in Northern California right now, they took a broad-brush approach, and we're in our perfect season to be using prescribed fire, and they decided that it was not safe for them to do so. So it's a missed opportunity to take that kind of broad brush. And so we're going to need to be able to figure out how to deal with multiple forms of entry and multiple passes, to be able to be effective at scale here. I would like to also comment about the pest issue, because that's a bit of my wheelhouse here. So when you heat treat something, you are able to manage the phytosanitary conditions, and have limited issues in being able to ship overseas. And then, I guess, last, but not, you know, there's a lot of conversation, I'm sure there's some public debate here, that we can continue to have a lot of thought and discussion about. And I'll just say that, you know, one of the great benefits we have is that we live in California, which has deep soils, generally abundant precipitation, and lots of sunshine, and a vegetation type that's really designed to be able to grow and respond very effectively in that space. So, you know, the challenge is, we can't control photosynthesis. We are in a place where we produce a lot of woody vegetation, both in the forms of shrubs, as well as trees. And in a changing climatic condition, with a legacy of not having the economics of scale to be able to manage these landscapes to the ability that we recognize now, we basically don't have a future without fire or prescribed fire. And the question is, how do we want to control that smoke that comes at us? And what is that going to mean for us? And uncontrolled wildfire smoke is, as we all know, something that none of us want to experience. And we now work in this world, or live in this world, where we're in shared airsheds, not just shared watersheds. So, you know, I appreciate any project that's going to be able to help make an impact at that scale, and help reduce the potential smoke impacts that are going to come our direction in the future of wildfire. We've lost one out of every eight acres to wildfire in the last decade. Many of that is at high severity conditions, and we are seeing reversals and losses of forest conditions across California in a way that is staggering to me. Our scale of investment is broad, and we recognize that pace and scale takes a lot of significant effort. I just want to call out the work that the utility companies are doing right now. You know, we have seen some big wind events in the last couple of months, and we haven't had any major wildfire-related activity attached to utilities. I think they're a little bit of the unsung heroes in this moment. It's caused impact through the power shut-offs, but we have fundamentally changed that equation. I think we should acknowledge that. So I'll close. I'm happy to say that I'm here to support you guys with technical questions you might have. There's a lot of debate about this topic, and, you know, the question is, how do we really supercharge our efforts, and supercharge our workforce, and really build durability and resiliency in both our communities and our ecosystems? And I just want to applaud you all through the work that you do through RCRC, to get in front of these issues, and recognize it's not just somebody else's problem, it's really our collective challenges, and that, you know, that you're trying. And that, you know, we can't just depend on the private sector to find solutions for this. We can't just depend on the public sector to find solutions to these challenges. We really have to work together. And, you know, through thoughtful effort, and through, you know, lots of adaptive framework, I think we can do something that will be very effective for California, for our communities, and we will benefit from that in our local level. So thank you for the conversation. And any questions, I'm happy to come back.
Thank you. Supervisor Madron?
Well, thanks, Yana, for being here. You have been heavily engaged in all these things, and really bringing prescribed fire to humble yourself and Leila, you know, I mean, or...
Leila Quinn-Davidson and Jeff Stackhouse, yes.
Yeah, I mean, just amazing work. And with groups like the Mid-Clemeth Watershed Council, the Karuk Tribe, the Watershed Center out in Hayfork, tremendous efforts. And, you know, whenever a fire happens here, and we as board members have something in our district, we get engaged with the fire incident commanders and all the people there. And I know that they are really amazed to be in an area like this, where the communities are so engaged, because it really provides all this incredible opportunity. Like, not so much this year, because of the park fire drew away a lot of the personnel that we had, but the last couple of years, we had 2,000 to 3,000 personnel that allowed us to do tens of thousands of acres of beneficial burning, you know, because the weather conditions were right, and we had the personnel and all that. And without that, Willow Creek probably would have burned down, and a few other places, and Orleans and other stuff. So tremendous work, and I applaud you and your staff for, you know, your engagement and all that. Would it be your preference to have smaller-scale, local facilities that, you know, have less transportation involved in them, less large industrial complexes? I'm just curious about your personal thoughts about scale. We talk a lot about scale and pace, but, so where are you at on that?
It's a great question. I mean, every community needs help.
Yeah.
Right? We know that. We know some of the challenges of where the DG Fairhaven plant was placed, right? It's placed right on the edge of the coast. It can only pull in 180 degrees, right? It can't, it doesn't have the benefit of 360 degrees of access, because there's, you know, the Pacific Ocean out there on half of its potential pull line. You know, the pragmatic approach, when you start to think about the economics of scale, the workforce industry, the transportation network, all the parts that have to come together, it's hard to get something that's going to economically pencil out at the small scale. And, you know, it's complicated. Our energy demands aren't going down. They're only going up, right? We're now having conversation about bringing nuclear power back into the equation, because of the demand that AI technology is taking. And, you know, whether or not we can be an appropriate consumer, and decide whether we don't want that technology or not, it's really hard to be able to reduce our, you know, our demand, our personal footprint in that space. And so our energy demands are only going up. And there is no free lunch in the energy space. There really isn't. There's an impact at every scale. So coming back to your question around, how can you micro-locate all these different facilities? The problem is that we spent basically the last 45 years as a nation disinvesting in wood products innovation. And we really got off track, and didn't realize how important it was to be able to continue to advance our thinkings, and to advance the capacities around utilization, around processing, around all kinds of things. So we're catching up. And so the proven technology space is really pretty limited. You know, the sustainable aviation fuels industry looks promising, but it's not there yet. You know, gasification is interesting, but it's still hard to get the technology to work all the time. You know, so I still believe that we need to work with the technologies that we know and understand, and maybe they're the transition to something else. But we need to get reach into every community. But the scale of facilities often becomes too difficult to do these micro-location concepts, to be able to support enough energy demand, and enough processing, and enough workforce to be able to pull all those pieces together. So in an idealized way, sure, but in my pragmatic way, I have come to recognize that larger can be beautiful, too. And it really, because it can have more impact, and be able to be more efficient, and you're able to stay in business.
Well, I appreciate, excuse me, I appreciate that. And, you know, I mean, in an ideal world, we'd be able to find funding to help Scotia, you know, rebuild its plant, and make it, you know, to the state of technology we have today. Because they do have a lot of issues there with emissions. And that's been brought before RCAA many times, in terms of concerns about the operation of that plant. But it's the only local one we have anymore, right? Because Fairhaven went down, Corbell, Ultra Power went away, Corbell didn't find it to pencil out. So they're going to still keep all in, all the way to Anderson, where he owns his own plant over there. So that's somewhat concerning. But, you know, on the smoke impacts, that is always a big concern for everybody. I mean, if you live out in Willow Creek, many weeks, if not months out of the summer, they're dealing with serious impacts from smoke, and Orleans, and out in Dinsmore area and other places as well. But, you know, when you talk with the Native American folks, and they talk about salmon habitat, and the way that the, you know, back in native times, the only tools they had was fire. And so they would actually enhance the burning of certain areas, like the Bald Hills, or other areas for forage, and other things. And they argue that the smoke actually helped cool the temperature in the air, that then protected the salmon in the river. So it's really kind of a weird dichotomy there, of like, smoke bad, smoke good, you know. And I certainly don't have the answer to any of that, but I just wanted to mention that, that, and it was really different. I mean, back in the teepee burner days, people on the coast really knew what smoke was like, because there were, what, 50 or 100 teepee burners just here along...
Hundreds.
Along the coast, you know, that were really intense on air quality and smoke and all that. Thank goodness, that's gone away, because it really wasn't doing anything other than burning the material up. We weren't getting any electricity out of it, or anything else. So, well, thank you for being here and answering questions.
And just to ease yourself a little bit, is Frank calls a lot of his chips from Weaverville over here for export, after he hauls a load over there. So the trucks are running almost 80%. They're running freight, which is, they're freight-driven. And same thing with our garbage being hauled to Medford. We haul back a lot of material for Fox Farm. Did, I don't know now, I've been gone quite a while, but they haul quite a bit of material. So the bane of a truck's existence is running empty. The last thing they want to haul is sailboat fuel. They want to haul something that has something that goes in there. And our trucks do a pretty good job of running both ways. Joe Costa would not send a truck out unless he had a backhaul for it, so...
No, thank you. And just one last thing, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, if I might. You mentioned innovation. And I just want to give a shout-out to Christie Prescott.
Sure.
And Ted MacArthur at, you know, Six Rivers National Forest. The work they're doing with CalWorks, WRX, right? And I know you work with them, a lot of people have, and they're, they're really focused hard on innovation, and trying to figure out some of these pathways, you know, for product innovation and the rest of it. So thanks for bringing that up.
Yeah, Ted's doing a great job.
Shout-out.
Supervisor Arroyo?
Thank you. Thanks, Yana. I have one more for the RCRC and GSFA team. I would be interested in what you found about this appendix, but I think, rather than kind of going into how that got there, or why, a better question to ask would be, are you currently evaluating or thinking of using in the future feedstock from Six Rivers National Forest?
Not as part of this project. It's limited to what's in that GIS slide that I showed you.
Okay.
Let me, if Arthur's still there, Arthur, anything you want to add on that?
No, that's absolutely correct. This project does not contemplate, and does not include anything outside of the working area, which, unless I miss, unless my geographic knowledge is off, does not include anything from Six Rivers. Supervisor Arroyo, we will find out what, if anything, that information was used for. But we are definitely, as part of this project, there is no intention to take material from Six Rivers.
Okay. Because this table appears to be an evaluation of energy density per finished pellet for different feedstock sources, and it definitely does include Six Rivers. So maybe that was evaluated at one point, and not moved forward with. But, you know, if we are talking about something that is, you know, having impact on our community, then certainly this board would want to know.
Absolutely. No, and I can assure you that is not the case. I've already reached out to our AQ team, which did the energy calculations. And we will, like I said, if they did use that information for anything, either as proxy for material coming out of other forests, or if it's just an error, we will absolutely...
And there was an evaluation done on, I think, eight areas, six areas, and we've come down to the two that we're at right now, right?
In terms of the feedstock analysis?
Yeah.
Correct.
Yeah, we ran, there was a, I sent a whole bunch of feedstock, and buckets and stuff to Sacramento, and they made a visit here, and met with, met with all the timber companies and everything else, because, believe it or not, we've got a forest fire problem here, too. So, but, and it would have been, as we talk about the effort of the transport, the transport here would have been no rail, no anything. We just put it, make it, and put it on a ship. But we've decided, GSFA has decided on the two locations that are now, because it's more centrally located, and it works better for us. But we looked at everything. To say we didn't look would be, you know, so that may have been why it slipped in there. And then, the other factor is, I appreciate that. The next item's the letter, and just before we go into that, I've talked to Darren, who's the head of GSFA, and I don't think there will be a problem. I know, SEQA says, we doubled the time from 30 days to 60 days. And then I think it says something that it can be added on again for abnormal, abnormal reasons, or out of the normal reasons. And I don't know if we've hit that. But Darren's talked, and we'll talk to the board on Tuesday, or Wednesday. And I do not have, I can't prejudge what they'll say, but I have no doubt that they'll extend it another 30 days. So I appreciate Darren and Pat for that. But I can only talk to Darren because of brown act stuff, so. Anyway, sure.
I'll speak to the letter, if that's what we're taking up now?
Sure.
Okay. So I put this on the agenda, you know, based on public request. We got an abundant amount of comment and feedback, asking for our board to overtly support an extension of the SEQA deadline, and urge additional public meetings outside of the sort of holiday season and pre-election season, which we recognize are... of the sort of holiday season and pre-election season, which we recognize are, are very intense for people. Right now, I would say that the amount of attention being paid to local or regional issues is just a little bit less. And so I think that was a very reasonable request, and that's why I wrote the letter.
Very reasonable. That's why we, well, we, I didn't know you were writing the letter back then, but anyway, that's very timely. Public comment?
Hi, my name is Gordon Clattworthy. GSNR's project aiming to produce 1 million tons of wood pellets annually, that actually can disrupt forest management practices and increase logging rates. Wood burning does produce more greenhouse gases than coal. The electricity is classified as renewable because new trees are theoretically planted to replace the old ones. But those new trees take decades to recapture all the carbon that has been put off by these burnings. Wood pellet production relies heavily on international subsidies to pay, to pay for, which are diminishing. Right now, in the UK and European Union, a lot of these wood burning power plants are, are going out. There are a lot of controversy over there. So, you know, as time goes on, I think more and more money, if we're going to invest it, will have to come from the county. It also provides a false solution distracting from genuine wildfire prevention. We were talking about DRACs earlier. If DRACs has resorted to clear-cutting Canadian forests, all while using the same talking points we heard here. It, it's, I don't think this project is right for our community, and I also feel that it undermines our climate goals. So that's what I have to say about that. Thank you.
Hi, Board. Tom Wheeler, Executive Director of EPIC. First, thank you to Mr. Blackwell and Mr. Royland for the presentation today. I appreciate them coming all the way to Humboldt. I think Supervisor Roy for the letter, an extension of the 90-day public comment period is that sort of, it's warranted under these sort of extraordinary circumstances of this project. You know, this is three separate kind of projects across three counties. And then when you look at the broader kind of pole radius for each of the pellet facilities, we're talking even more land. It's extraordinarily complex and controversial project. The DEIR expands over 1,300 pages, and that doesn't even include the appendices. So to fully have this sort of robust public comment period that we should have for a project of this sort, it's necessary to have that longer public comment period. And then to the ordering of public meetings, it's essential that these be ordered in such a way that they are effective. I'm glad that there was such a large turnout at last night's meeting. But one, one sort of concern that we have is that by ordering them too early in the public process, there isn't a time for the public to fully digest and understand what is being proposed here. And so the public is limited in their ability to ask kind of good questions about the project to the project proponents. One thing also to point out is particularly to Supervisor Wilson's comment, we have a large population of non-English speakers in South Stockton. A lot of the documents or all the documents, I don't believe, are available, are not translated yet. Those translations are forthcoming. So I ask that the board send this letter asking for a 90-day public comment period and for an ordering of public comment or public meetings so that they are more effective. And it's no concern, or it's no surprise that the environmental groups are concerned about this project. This is being proposed in the shadow of DRACs, in the shadow of the experience of the American Southeast, where we have large pelletized wood biomass plants. From those experiences, the communities where these plants exist have suffered because of pollution associated with plants. To Supervisor Madron's concern about the tail wagging the dog, we've seen that in the American Southeast, where we've seen logging of whole trees to supply the biomass plants. And then there's a question of greenhouse gas emissions. The transportation emissions of this project are going to be significant. Wood is not a very energy-dense material, so transporting it from forest to facility, from facility to Stockton, from Stockton to places all over the world is really going to balloon the greenhouse gas emissions from this project. Thank you so much.
Hi, my name's Greg King. I live in Arcata. And our presenters reminded me of something that Roger Redoni said to me once after I talked for a while, and he says, you talk pretty fast, but I'm starting to catch up to you. It's like the rainmakers or something. So I think a lot of the points I have here have already been gone over, but it is worth noting that wood-fired biomass is a multi-billion dollar industry and it's quickly growing. And the industry has adopted or co-opted such viable terms as forest health, utilized waste products restoration, and fuels reduction to mask what will actually be industrial logging operations designed to provide wood fuel for power plants. And that's what we're looking at here. A lot of talk about DRACs. DRACs is now anticipating tax credits and subsidies under the Biden administration's Inflation Reduction Act and looks to take advantage of those in the American West to produce wood pellets. Recently, I discussed these trends with Dr. Chad Hansen. He's the Executive Director of the John Muir Project, which has several lawsuits ongoing right now to stop some of these projects. He's an expert on fire ecology and fuels reduction in the Western United States. And he told me, people don't understand that 21st century logging is mostly about dirty fuel. It's not about lumber. Lumber is secondary. The logging industry these days sees our forests as a source of energy. They look at trees as giant sticks of coal. That's what's happening. That's logging in the 21st century, and that's what these plants will be. So of course, these dirty fuel operations can't just come out and say this. So the GSNR website, you'll see the grim language of greenwashing. Due to a combination, it says, of the impacts of climate change, catastrophic threats like wildfires, and decades-long fire suppression tactics, note the omission of the word logging, which has damaged our forests more than anything. Our forests have become a danger to the environment, to the animals and the plants which inhabit them, to life and property, and to their own existence. Forests a danger to their own existence? Must we destroy the village to save it? This is not the language of rational forest policy, but of greenwashing, of environmental destruction. Today in California, numerous examples of logging for biomass are ongoing, especially in the Sierra Nevada, where national forests, national parks, and wilderness areas are experiencing heavy logging under the guise of forest health and fuels reduction. So certainly many small regional forest health and fuels reduction projects, such as many that were discussed here already, have, especially those done adjacent to homes, which is most important, are worthy of the name. But what is being proposed by GSNR and DRACs and the state of California with all the subsidies is anything but green. Rather, it's a recipe for disastrous and perhaps final pillaging of our already suffering Western forests. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have copies for you all. Where do I take these? Thank you.
My name's Wendy Ring. I'm a retired physician and public health professional, member of the Humboldt Coalition for Clean Energy, which is a coalition of 18 community organizations, environmental, faith, and political. And I'm also a member of Climate Health Now, which is a statewide organization of physicians from, for healthy climate action. The largest wood pellet plant in the world, currently under construction in Alabama, would produce 1.1 million metric tons of pellets a year. GSNR's project would produce 1 million tons. That's not a demonstration project. Half the capacity of the project is devoted not to fuel reduction, but to pelletizing slash from commercial timber harvests and salvage logging after wildfires. I've read the air quality and greenhouse gas sections of the DEIR, and while I have concerns about some of its methods, like using emissions factors provided by pollution controls manufacturers instead of those derived from actual pellet plants, failing to count emissions from the prescribed burns that would be necessary to extend fire suppression for 20 years, and claiming that the Bay Area and Sacramento air districts say health impacts from high-emitting projects can't be modeled when that is exactly what those agencies do advise, the EIR's conclusions are bad enough. We're talking about significant and unavoidable deterioration of air quality in eight and possibly 11 of the state's 35 air districts, most of whom are not in compliance with current air quality standards. A cancer risk increased to three to four times higher than what's deemed acceptable by the state. Over the project's 20-year lifespan, net significant and unavoidable greenhouse gas emissions of, and this is just my addition, 60 million metric tons, even including the avoided wildfires. So the DEIR says the carbon will be recaptured in 60 years, but we don't have that long. The UN Environmental Program just released its annual emissions gap report entitled, "No More Hot Air, Please," because the current gap between countries' pledges and actions means that without major rapid additional greenhouse gas reductions in the next 10 years, we have a 97% chance of warming over 2 degrees Celsius in this century. So it's, it's a huge project. We, I really support extending the comment period and scheduling more meetings later in that, in that period for community members to speak. But I also think that Humboldt County should not be supporting this project at all. Thanks.
Thank you.
My name's Matt Simmons. I am the climate attorney at the Environmental Protection Information Center. So first, I wanted to talk about DRACs a little bit. It's come up that they have not signed a final agreement with DRACs, but they have entered into a memorandum of understanding. And DRACs is one of the only companies that operates large-scale pellets like this throughout the world. So it makes sense that they're interested. So a little bit more about DRACs. They're an international energy company that operates these big wood pellets, wood pellet plants. And earlier this year, the Financial Times reported that they were logging old-growth forests in British Columbia in order to feed one of these wood pellet plants. Because it's exactly the problem that Supervisor Madron talked about, where the tail wags the dog and these, you have to feed the beasts with these pellet plants. Now, of course, they have environmental review in Canada too, right? And these old-growth areas were listed as no-go areas in that environmental process, but it didn't matter because the company needed to feed its stocks. Similarly, in the Southeast, in Louisiana and Mississippi, DRACs is being fined millions of dollars for violating air quality standards. Again, they had agreed to not violate these air quality standards when they got permitted, but then they did it anyway. And so it's not just about what's written in the environmental document. It's about trusting these people to actually protect the environment, protect lives. A little bit about South Stockton, it's an environmental justice community that's already severely overburdened. And I think that citing this export, export operation there is a classic example of environmental racism. And I think we should ask ourselves as Humboldt whether or not we'd be comfortable with something like this coming to our port and coming to our bay. So, oh, and then one thing that hasn't come up at all, and I, I think it's interesting that it hasn't come up, is that there will also be an environmental, air quality impact to the communities in the nations overseas where these pellets are actually burned. You know, that has an impact as well on human health. All of that is direct health impacts. And then Dr. Ring already talked about the climate impacts because burning these pellets is similar to, some people would say worse than burning coal. So it's not an actual climate solution. I think we should really think of this as a chance to oppose a project that we would oppose if it was coming to Humboldt. And I think it's time for the Humboldt County Board of Supervisors to withdraw its support from the sturdy project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Ellen Taylor. I was thinking about public comment for a couple of minutes. These, these, these are very wise people who are, who are helping you with their comment. And actually, in one of the telephone hearings, there were, it was overwhelmingly negative in regard to this. I'm wondering what happens to public comment. This is really like a giant timber harvest plan with a, with a 100, 100-mile diameter. Timber harvest plans devote this number of, of pages to slopes, the amount of water that's affected, cumulative impacts, all those things. This is so huge. I've only, I've only been able to read the executive summary so far, and because of opinions that you heard of mine last week, I really support the no-project alternative. There were, there are a few other, I'm going to read the rest of it, I hope, though it's huge. There are, there are other aspects that appeared in the executive summary, such as the fact that the IPCC really does not regard biofuel as biomass as an, as a sustainable carbon-negative fuel source. Their experiments were all done with, with liquid biofuel. None of them even addressed woody biomass, which is totally different. It's a totally different source and has completely different effects. I've, I've read numerous studies which discuss biomass as a source of fire and the, covering lots and lots of areas which have been logged. And it's, it was established that biofuel, biomass component in a particular forest was not one of the definitive characteristics which, which caused fire. Climate was the principal one, climate and weather, and, and the, the management that, that, the, the particular ownership that managed the property. It's actually in the, and I advise you all to read the book that Greg King referred to, Smoke Screen, by Chad Hansen. It's actually much more common to have fires in areas that have already been logged. Again, I'd like to emphasize that the no-project alternative is, is far preferable. It doesn't mean that you can't do anything, which is the way they've interpreted no-project alternative, but indigenous forest slow-intensity burns have been, have been making very rapid progress lately. And there are other ways of managing fire danger. The, the, thank you.
Thank you very much. I just want to, go ahead.
Michael Overson, I guess I'm familiar to a few of you there. I'm really happy to see this Board of Supervisors handling this subject. In, in the past, not you, but previous boards have really played the rube in the face of a lot of exploitive activities and industries. This board could have stopped the fish wheels and the canneries in our fish, in our rivers, and we would have fish to eat today. Or could have stood in, in place as a regulatory body and tempered timber harvests so that they weren't impacting so much of our natural resources, which we really depend on here. And that, that's one of the beauties of, of this county. We have a very strong native voice, and there's a lot of wisdom in it. I wanted to just briefly quote an emerging leader, Sammy Gensah, who, when addressing the Yale School of Forestry, said, "The industrial revolution is over. The restoration revolution has begun." And I know a number of you are part of that revolution. This board has the ability, as others have said, to say, "No, thanks." But then I hear today that we're really subsidizing this. And that really got my attention. You know, okay, we got a problem in the forest. We have a problem with fire. There are a lot of solutions with which we can subsidize. I know through the North Coast Regional Partnership, they're addressing some of them. Kathy McCovey has presented some really strong evidence that we need to protect our people and our villages. And so there are places for us to do our, our subsidies and make effects. The thing is that we learned from Hurwitz, we said no to Calpine. This board said no to Calpine. This board said no to Goldman Sachs to take over the management of our harbor. This is a strong board and with a lot of power. And, and I would like to see you use it in a way that when something just seems just too good to be true, it really isn't. in a way that when something just seems just too good to be true, it really isn't. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll bring it back. Just a point of clarification. Drax is not the biggest importer of pellets. Inviva is, so.
Chair Bone, I have.
There's three online, yes.
Okay.
Before they speak or after? Okay. Please.
Thank you. Caller 5434, I'm going to unmute you, and you have three minutes.
My name is Gary Hughes, and I work as the Americas Program Coordinator with the international organization Biofuel Watch, Humboldt County property owner. And our organization has been watching this project for some time. I'd like to commend the Humboldt County Board of Supervisors for embarking upon this process and doing some very serious due diligence about this massive industrial project. And I think it's really important that people are looking at the moral and ethical implications of the county having a leadership role in this project. We are in strong support of the county, the Board of Supervisors sending the letter to Golden State Finance Authority and Golden State Natural Resources regarding the extension of public comment, and in particular, the request that future public meetings be rescheduled and that additional meeting times be added so that they are held at a more timely moment within the public review process. So, thanks very much to the Board of Supervisors of Humboldt County taking a really, really close look at this project, because there's a lot of reputational risk at play here for supervisors, and the public relations nightmare is real, and we find it significant that the project proponents in the presentation never mentioned Drax. Unfortunately, Supervisor Madron brought it up and added that to the conversation because it's a very key part of everything that is at stake here. It's been a very long discussion, and I'm very appreciative of the opportunity to provide comments by phone, so I'll cut it short there, just saying that we really do hope that the Board of Supervisors will follow through and send this letter. Thank you.
Caller 6127, I'm going to unmute you, and you have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Daniel Chandler from Trinidad, and I'm representing 350 Humboldt today. We appreciate the conversation board members have had about this forest health, basically, but want to address the large unmentioned, that is, the climate effects of this project. For the following reasons, 350 Humboldt urges the Board to withdraw any current or future support for the Golden State pellet factory's demonstration project, including calling the board representative from project promotion or oversight. After reviewing the draft, DEIR, please consider opposing the project. This is not a demonstration project, it is a huge industrial operation supported by one of the most polluting companies in the world, Drax. The damage imposed by wood pellet factories has been exhaustively documented in the despoliation of our southern forests and in Canada. The DEIR concludes that the project would result in potentially significant and unavoidable impacts to greenhouse gas emissions and therefore would result in a cumulatively considerable impact. These impacts would happen during the time we're trying to get to net zero by 2050. Any potential carbon benefits from forest management would be much later, as the DEIR points out. The most critical issue is the effects on the climate of burning the pellets in the places to which they are shipped. To its credit, the DEIR does not sidestep this issue entirely and presents an alternative analysis showing that burning the pellets will produce approximately 1.5 million metric tons of CO2 each year. The DEIR also tries to calculate a reduction in greenhouse gases from replacing coal with wood pellets. Unfortunately, it does not calculate the more salient cost of substituting combustion of pellets for installation of solar or wind energy. It defies logic that in order to address climate change-caused forest health, the project makes climate change worse. In addition, the DEIR contains a long list of environmental and health effects that are significant and unavoidable, including air pollution in non-attainment zones, destruction of endangered species, threatening nesting birds, bats, fish, and wetlands to the point of causing them to drop below self-dustaining levels. We urge you to withdraw all Humboldt County support for this disastrous project.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Caller 0920, I'm going to unmute you, and you have three minutes.
Yes, hi, my name is Martha Walden. I very much appreciate the proposed letter to GSNR. I think it puts the case well for extending the comment period to 90 days. Anybody rescheduling the remaining two public meetings or scheduling additional ones, I hope that GSNR will listen. And I also appreciate the extensive discussion of the board and the two representatives of the project. I certainly haven't had time to read the 1,300-page DEIR, but I understand from others who have made more headway that it does acknowledge the very substantial increase in greenhouse gas emissions. That would not only contradict California's mandate to become carbon-neutral by 2050, it also ignores the global climate crisis. We're running towards the cliff's edge, and this project does not slow us down, even though it has been billed as a green solution. Substituting wood for coal has no benefit for the climate when you count actual emissions and realize that biogenic carbon poses as much danger to the climate as fossil fuels in the next 30 years, which is the critical timeframe available to us. The plain reality we can't get around is that we must emit as little CO2 as possible, whether it's fossil-based or biogenic. And that means deriving our electricity from solar, wind, or geothermal. The DEIR documents other significant environmental and health impacts of air pollution and destruction of endangered species, just to name a couple. In short, this project needs a major redesign to achieve its stated goals. Thank you.
Thank you.
Caller 8478, I'm going to unmute you, and you have three minutes.
Good morning, everyone. My name is, good morning, board, and good morning to all of the advocates and attendees. My name is Gloria Alonso. I am a representative of the Stockton community. I work as an environmental justice advocacy coordinator with Guerra Manila Racing, and I have been keeping touch on this project for almost a year and a half now. I have to, I want to start by thanking the board's leadership in addressing some of the concerns regarding the public comment timeline or the public comment period. And I just want to appreciate the fact that you are sending a letter to GSNR requesting that. It really speaks volumes to some of the advocacy efforts that we have been trying to coordinate at a local level in Stockton. And with that, I will segue into the Stockton piece. I am really appreciative of everyone who raised their voice on behalf of Stockton today. I honestly was not expecting to hear so many heartfelt comments regarding how overlooked Stockton has been in this entire process. And I will begin by addressing how challenging it has been to gain information about GSNR from the very beginning, when GSNR decided to overlook Stockton on the scoping process, and we didn't gain any information virtually nor in person a year ago. And now, I don't know where we're seeing somewhat GSNR acting on that same pattern by overlooking the need to have a considerable amount of days to have an in-person meeting regarding the DEIR. So, as you all may know, the DEIR was released less than eight days ago, and we're looking to have our first in-person meeting tomorrow. That speaks volumes to the challenges that we have. I'm really glad that some of the advocates mentioned that we don't even have translations, right? And so, when you're dealing with a community that has so many different challenges and put this at the bottom of the priority list, it just adds another layer of difficulties to everyone involved, not just on the advocate side, but on the community visibility, and too, especially with a bunch of other things coming down the pipeline like elections and whatnot. So, I'll finish with that. Thank you all for the letter again, and I really hope that you listen to the residents of Humboldt County in regards to the type of leadership that Humboldt County should be representing regarding these concerns with the greenwashing of GSNR and the forest resiliency rhetoric. Thank you.
Thank you.
That is all, Chair Bone.
Great. Bring it back to the board. Oh, we'll take a break. You tell me. Up, good to side.
It's 11:42. Do you want to come back at 11:50?
Okay.
Okay.
Supervisor Royal.
Sorry, can I pause for a moment?
I'll just start with a motion to send the letter.
I'll second that.
That's all right. And I think any community that would be having these projects in their, if this was being proposed for where we are, we would be asking for this. And so, I think it's good representation on our part to extend that courtesy where we can and where we have some influence. That being said, I think there's probably a larger conversation as we move forward about biomass fuels and their sort of large-scale development and export, which we're not going to fully conclude today, I don't think. I don't think we have everything we need to do that. But nonetheless, I think it'll be something that Humboldt County and counties that have these issues around forest management will have, will continue. In general, forests have been before, frankly, colonization and parcelization, forests were managed in a way that was certainly not as passive as people had imagined or as newer folks to this region had imagined for a long time. But that management and the ecosystems that were created are just having, are much more challenging, and it's much more inefficient in the way we do it now because we're doing it in these little pieces all over the place. Wildfire wasn't wild before there were borders for which fires could cross, and, or at least wasn't considered in that same man, in that same way. But now, we're in a new paradigm, and we're trying to figure it out as quickly as we can under these very challenging climate issues and carbon management considerations. So, I think the conversations that have been brought to us from these communities and from our environmental advocacy organizations is valid and something we should continue on. But for now, I think for this agenda item, moving forward with the letter and thanking everybody for coming today to talk about all these things is what we should do.
Supervisor Royal.
Now, you're eating. We got to sneak in bites where we can. Yes, I, of course, support sending the letter, and I think that's, you know, sort of the least we can do to respond to that very overt and understandable request for this extension and additional public engagement opportunities. And I do appreciate that there have been quite a few public engagement opportunities, and it seems like, you know, now that the full extent of the possible, you know, project is known, and, you know, there's information about that, that now is a great time to re-engage. So, thank you all for doing that. And I also think it's important that we figure out in the future how to, as Supervisor Wilson said, express our perspective on biomass, but particularly on this project, and, you know, maybe that can come in the form of a future comment from this board on the DEIR or some other, you know, form to express, you know, I certainly appreciate you Supervisor Bone for participating in RCRC and some of the, you know, advocating really strongly for Humboldt County, and I think there's probably diverse perspectives on this particular project and how we kind of continue to support your participation in RCRC, but voice concern about this project is, I think, a future question, but it's not on the agenda really today, although we do have the opportunity to give direction as deemed appropriate by this board. So, you know, I think we've heard abundantly that people are concerned that Humboldt County is supporting this move and this project, and, you know, I don't know that that's the shared perspective of this board, so we'll figure out how to address that moving forward.
All right. I'll agree with that, but I just, that's probably why we don't have unanimous votes every time. It's been moved and seconded.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
Chair Bone?
Yep.
Supervisor Arroyo? Motion carries 4-0.
Supervisor Madron?
Yeah, Pat, I had another question, if you might come back up, if that would be okay. So, I asked earlier about Drax and what engagement we had. Had you picked, you know, your partner, your provider, your operator, et cetera, and you mentioned that, no, you hadn't, that would come down the road after a number of things. And then a commenter mentioned that you have an MOU with Drax. Do you have an MOU with Drax?
We do. We have a non-exclusive, non-binding MOU with Drax, and it does a couple of things. One, for us, it gets us access to them for their technical expertise. As mentioned, they are the second-largest producer of pellets in the world, and it gives us access to their expertise where it's working well, but they've also been canon where it's not, where they're having emission problems and things like that. Another area where they've stressed that we need to be thinking seriously about is monitoring and verification of feedstock and the challenges they've had after their acquiring of Pinnacles, a company up in the northwestern area. So, for us, we get technical expertise. For Drax, they are looking at potentially carbon-negative energy production using what's called BECS, bioenergy carbon capture systems, and they're looking at potentially doing that in the United States. And as a rule, they're learning from us in terms of how you navigate California's political and regulatory environment. And that's what the MOU contemplates, is sharing of information back and forth. It speaks to the future that there is the potential for operational agreements or equity investments, but it leaves that open net as something to be, a bridge to be crossed at some point in the future, should we choose to go there. But the MOU itself today... But the MOU itself today is non-binding and non-exclusive.
Is it true that they're the only ones out there that operate at this level?
No, there are private entities that aren't even necessarily pellet producers that, in fact, we've had conversations with in the past, well, that are more equipped to operate industrial plants. And so they could be a third-party operator, for example. And there are smaller entities out there that do pellet production as well. So there are multiple options.
Yeah, okay. You know, as recommended by your partner there, I did look at section 2.4. And I have scanned through quite a bit of the draft DEIR. I haven't read every single page. I don't think anybody, probably 1,300 pages. But I have spent quite a bit of time going back and forth through the executive summary. And I think I have a pretty good sense of what this project is and what it's about and all that. And we do have, on our agenda item, there is a statement that we can take other actions as deemed appropriate, which is a pretty broad thing. We often have that in our agenda items because there may be something else that the board wants to do to direct staff or to, you know, discuss other motions that might be made in regards to things like this. And while I appreciate that, you know, there's still significant time, especially if your board accepts this request for an extension, that there's significant time for continued review and input, but I'm not quite sure when that will actually happen. We only have a limited number of meetings left in our year. And I mean, are we, as a board, considering bringing this agenda item back to provide future input to the draft DEIR? Whether we want to support a no-project alternative or a smaller-scale approach? And I think you mentioned that, you know, this so-called demonstration project is designed to be the whole big picture, but you might do smaller things within that, right? Because if you don't go big and you do an EIR on just a small picture, you can't then, without doing a new draft DEIR, go to that larger scale. So it's been created as a very large potential box with three different operational areas and stuff like that. So it concerns me that our board may not have adequate time to actually provide input. We've had a very detailed presentation here today in regards to this project with a lot of community input that we also had just a week ago and I frankly have been getting for years in regards to this project. So I'm going to make a motion here that we'll see if there's support for this or not. And it's really based on all of the stuff we've heard. It's based on, you know, the documents that have been presented that are online to review. And so here, here we go. So I would make a motion to not support this so-called demonstration project or the DRACs MOU due to the projected greenhouse gas emissions and climate impacts and the significant environmental justice impacts in relationship to the communities of Stockton and elsewhere. So that will be my motion. We'll see if it gets a second or not. I know that many board members are hoping that maybe there'll be an opportunity later for input, but I'm not sure that'll actually happen with the holidays and everything else as I stated. So if you want, I can read the motion again.
I'll, I'll second it, but I have a clarifying question that I don't think was covered. How would you, is, is it just a motion saying we don't, we don't support it? Or are you suggesting that a, a letter or some other documentation go with that?
I would suggest that staff would be directed to submit a letter to the draft DEIR process stating our, our position on the, on the project. So I would make that part of the motion. It's a good question. And so are you seconding that with that addition?
Well, I seconded the initial motion. I'd just like to have a little bit here, what others have to say.
Is there a second on the table, though?
I did second the initial motion, yes. Does that, but he's modified it. Okay, sure. Yes, I continue to second it.
I, I mean, with due respect to Supervisor Madrone, I do have concerns about that without some, I mean, typically when you submit, and then I don't know which staff we would direct to do that necessarily and under, you know, what analysis would, and for me, I'd like, if that's, we're going to do a letter like that, I'm going to, I would like to make findings that are, that are pretty specific. And so I'm a little uncomfortable about that. I would encourage something to come back to the board if that's, if that's what you want to do, that we, that we can take a look at. And again, there's a couple of reasons why, I mean, it's sure, we can be concerned about the, and I think we should be concerned about impacts to maybe say other communities. But I, I think, I think from my perspective, it's like what, where's our nexus specifically?
Right, and that's why I listed those three things.
Yeah.
Greenhouse gas emissions, the document talks tremendously about that, that it's an upside-down equation with all the transportation and manufacturing and the rest of it. It's, it's definitely a, a carbon emitter. And then also climate impacts associated with increased greenhouse gas emissions. I mean, I'm speaking in broad terms, I realize that, but they're well documented in this document itself.
Yeah.
Those things will occur in addition to the concerns about environmental justice impacts to the communities in Stockton. Those are all well documented in this document. And so instead of getting into all the micro details, I've just kept in broad because, yeah, who would we direct as staff to actually provide that input?
Well, I guess what I'm saying is this is a draft EIR currently, so I don't know what the responses are to all of those things. And so to say in opposition, I would say that we would offer comments that we have concerns about those particular items. I think that's, I think if you wanted to say like that, I think that's a reasonable thing, but to, but to not, from my perspective, it's like to not, you, when you're getting to the part where you're commenting directly on whether the, the document should be approved or not, I would like to see the responses to those, to those first. That's just me. So I don't know.
So what you're saying, if I might, if I hear you correctly, is that if we were saying that we wanted to give input to the draft DEIR process about concerns around greenhouse gas emissions, climate impacts, and environmental justice issues, that we want to express that at this time? But if we wanted to get into all the details of those particular issues, we're going to need to spend some time drafting some details to be able to submit to the process? Is that, if I hear you correctly?
I, I say if you want to, if you want to submit a letter saying we're concerned about those particular issues, I think that's fine. I mean, I will, I would definitely support that letter that we have those, that we have concerns in relation to those things. I don't know where we are in this process, in a place where we're saying like we will support or recommend or not support the project yet. I'm not there. I'm not there yet.
I understand. And so if I hear you correctly, that would be a process right now to submit a letter expressing concerns about these issues?
Right.
And it sounds like we might have, not unanimous, but majority support for that at this time. And then the draft DEIR becomes a final EIR. And if there hasn't been significant changes in scale or considerations around all the shipping and the transportation and doing something that's more localized and considers the impacts on Stockton, which frankly, if it wasn't a shipping project, if that third element of this project went away, that deals with the issues around Stockton quite handily. And then we become more focused on what would be a smaller-scale issue be of two or three different plants in the Sierras that would provide electricity locally? That's a very different scenario that might come back to us as a result of the draft DEIR impact. And then we could be providing input to that, or it may not change the project at all. We could provide input to that. So if I'm hearing you correctly, you would see an opportunity down the road to perhaps comment on the final EIR.
Well, there is opportunity.
I understand that.
We just, we just extended it.
Yes.
We extended the period for the draft EIR.
For everybody to comment on it.
Yeah, no, I understand. Okay, well, I will amend my motion to make it into provide input to the draft DEIR process that there are concerns around projected greenhouse gas emissions, climate impacts, and environmental justice impacts to the community of Stockton.
May I suggest that you bring, bring a letter back at our next meeting that says that, that we can just then vote on? I, I think that might be a little bit better because I would also like to read the letter. And I think we could say a little more and make it more informed by the DEIR. I think that we, like everyone in the community, we haven't had a lot of time to look at this because it's so lengthy and it just came out. So my, I wanted to second it to, to back you up and to have this conversation, but my preference would really be that we bring back a letter that's a comment from this board on the DEIR, if that's the action, you know, you're proposing that we take. And then we can also have an opportunity to write a comment letter about the final EIR.
As a second action, yeah?
Yes. That, that would be my suggestion.
I'm going to take the suggestions of the rest of the board in regards to this. And I think Supervisor Bone's correct, we have extended the comment period, which is very, we're very grateful that that will hopefully occur at the board. I suspect it will. So I'll take that advice and I'll work on a letter and I'll work on an agenda item with the clerk of the board to bring it back. And our next meeting's not next week, it would be, it is next week. All right, well, I'll have to get right on that, won't I? Okay. So I will work on that and bring back a letter. I mean, even if it came in two weeks or something.
You have 90 days now or something, 60, so.
Potentially 90.
Potentially, yeah.
At any rate, I will take that advice and I will draw both my motions because you can't really have two. Withdraw the first one, I'll withdraw the second one. I think that would be a much cleaner way to proceed with all of this. So I appreciate the advice of all of my board in regards to how to move forward on this. Thank you very much.
Just as we, as we tear this apart and everything else, does this open up for like any of us that serve on a board, being the Great Redwood Trail? If they're doing something that we don't like, or I don't like, or somebody doesn't like, that we think is, is unfeasible, do we bring it back to the board even though we're not the members and we're not on the board to tear apart or try to find every possible thing in the world? Because it just, I mean, there's, I don't know how many, I looked up the other day, there's quite a few pellet mills in the United States and I just, you know. I, as I follow up this, I know we looked, we looked at, this has been going on for an eight-year project and I, I think it's a pretty good product because this is what 40 rural counties have agreed upon to help the forest fire situation. We're kind of, we're kind of forgetting what got us into the forest and that's the fires. You know, I mean, it's just, you know, we can't go fight the fire because, I mean, we don't want to send the helicopters and the fire trucks because they're going to have too many emissions. I, I think there's, we keep talking about the big picture, but we're only looking at your big picture. And I think what we're doing here, as Jana said earlier, a treated forest, a treated forest recovers and doesn't burn as bad. And that's what we're kind of getting after. But, and that's, that's the way we looked at it, or I looked at it, my 20% of 200 members on the, you know, the 40 members on the board representing 200 supervisors, and we're taking one minor thing and just, you know, and, and tearing it apart. And I know there's a lot more working on this than just this. So I've, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm pretty aware of what goes on. So is this opening the door for us to complain about or to question everything that goes on to a board that we're going to look at? I mean, I don't know what the rules are in county council, I don't know.
I'll give you a response when you're ready.
Look at the county council.
I understand. Your.
When a board member is appointed to an outside commissioner board, then they, you represent the county as a whole in, in those decisions. And obviously there are times where, case in point right now, where maybe the board is not always in lock and step on an issue. And so as board members, you try to do your best to, to represent the county. Should any board member feel that any other board member has not done that appropriately or disagrees with a decision or a vote or support provided through a board or commission, then any board member does have the right to bring forward a discussion such as the one that's taking place today. So, you know, when you have a split board on, on some issues, then that puts your job, makes your jobs difficult when you're serving on boards and commissions and the expectation is that you do your best.
I just want a clarification, I just.
They start, yeah, I mean, you, you all have the, the option to agendaize anything anytime for discussion as a, as a body when you feel that that's necessary.
Great. Thank you. Fun stuff.
Mr. Chair.
Supervisor Madrone?
You know, I think it's a really great question, Chair, that you ask. It really is. And I think CIO Hayes did a good job of explaining, you know, what the general process is. Things change. I mean, eight years ago when this project began, the board makeup was very different and it probably would have been a 40, four to one vote, you know, in support of this project back then and maybe even up until about two years ago, it might have been 3-2 for support of a project like this. But as we know, things change over time, the board makeup changes and, and how people feel about things change. That's just the nature of change, right? Sorry to say that word so many times. But, I mean, I remember just recently where the Buckeye Conservancy, you brought up the Great Redwood Trail, they had a forum to discuss the Great Redwood Trail and they invited you and Supervisor Bushnell to sit on that panel when I'm the duly-appointed unanimously-supported board member representing the, the board on the Great Redwood Trail. And I was not invited to be part of that. And I even offered at the beginning of the meeting, well, if you or Supervisor Bushnell would step down, then I could participate, but because you both chose not to, I couldn't even participate because of the Brown Act, right? I had to sit there and just be quiet. So I think that there are all kinds of things in related, relationship to when we support somebody on the board to represent us at a particular thing, there needs to be respect on all levels. And I think it is incumbent upon us that when we know something is controversial, something that may not have full board support, that we really should probably bring it back to the board to really check in and update the board on what's going on. And I think the Great Redwood Trail is a great example of that because there's certainly some concerns in the O River Canyon from ranchers and the native communities about the project. But, you know, it has to go both ways in regards to how this kind of stuff.
And just, since we're going to.
Through the chair.
Go ahead.
If I could pull it back in a little bit here because we are getting off topic of, there was a procedural question, which is great, we've answered that. But, but we need to stay on topic to the agenda item at hand.
All right, so.
So I've withdrawn both my motions, so just to be clear.
So with that, thank you guys, everybody for coming here.
Okay.
So, and we'll go into closed session.
We need to read closed session in?
I understand that.
It is the intention of the board to meet in closed session pursuant to California Government Code Sections 54954.5 and 54957 in order to consider the public employee appointment for the position of the aviation director. It is also the intention of the board to meet in closed session pursuant to California Government Code Section 54956.9D4 in order to discuss the initiation of litigation in one potential case.
Any public comment on this?
Yes. 7718, I'm going to unmute you and you have three minutes.
Counselor, I think one of the most important appointments you'll be making is the position of aviator director. If I were sitting there to ask a few questions of this person, you're going to have, you're going to really need to have somebody who knows how to schedule and push to have scheduled flights that appear to work for the people in Humboldt County. Having worked before with prior people there to set up schedules, I think that was great foster at the time. We need really early flights out of here, probably a flight in the middle of the day and, and a return flight late. That gives us connection. Right now, I think they just added one flight to San Francisco that will enable that to happen, but we have one of the most approaching schedules in and out of our airport that I've ever seen, it's the forest I've seen, because we don't have that. The other thing, you need somebody who, who actually said, I have the ability to get ahead, hold up Frontier Airlines specifically and try and get them up here to have some competition with United, provide the schedule we have, to have the connectivity we need. And from what I've seen, Frontier has some extremely reasonable flights. And we probably, if we have somebody who has the ability to work that kind of a deal to get them up here, we'd be easily cutting our costs in and out of here by half or less just by their competition. There are all kinds of other things, you know, taking care of hangars and all this stuff. you've got to deal with. But when it comes down to actual functionality and us continuing to have good flight service here with the upgrades, we anticipate getting to our infrastructure there as far as being able to fly in and out here, you know, under duress and stressful conditions. I would look forward to having someone who actually has that ability regarding the other item here, anticipating a litigation with the second or third time out. So hopefully you will make an decision and report out. So my final question is, how long do you anticipate till you report out of closed session?
39 minutes.
Thank you.
That is all.
Report out? There's nothing to report out today? County Council?
Thank you, Chair Bone. There was no reportable action taken with regard to items G2 and G3.
Thank you. Have a great day, everybody. Have a good Halloween.